Okay. Hi, Doug.
Heather, Ms. Curran, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Okay, one more. All right.
Good.
Good. Longing this. All right, we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 9. It is 6:30 PM and you are taking part in the City Select Board meeting. We have a motion to call a meeting to order and the acceptance of the agenda. So moved by Kevin Connelly, second by Henry Goodrich, all the favor. Hi. Before we proceed, I'm just going to read our diversity equity statement. The City Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So with that, thank you. And are there any lock-ins this evening? If not, sure, any. So we will move to the report and town administrator, Jen.
Good evening. Nice to see you, buddy. We had a call with National Weather Service at 1:30. They put up their update at 4 o'clock this afternoon. So right now, the storm is going to stop now. Winds will start picking up overnight. Heavy rains, two to three inches, and high winds with gusts over 60 miles an hour. Steve McGuire thinks we might even get some gusts over 70 miles an hour with minor to moderate coastal flooding. The moderate flooding is mostly for the south coast of Rhode Island. Where it's basically some minor coastal flooding splats over the usual spots. The good thing is the wind's from the south and the current forecast is that wind will be tapering off in the morning, 6, 7 o'clock, high tide at the end. So we're not going to sink us. So that's good for us to make flooding standpoint from the ocean. We are expecting power outages with the amount of wind, the amount of rain. High trees kind of topple over, so we do expect to have other just no situant. Also, with the amount of rain, we can see some local street flooding. So if you are driving in this, use a little caution if you drive into some street flooding puddles in the road. But it's going to be a quick moving storm. It's going to be an impactful storm. Winds are supposed to ramp up around midnight and go again at 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. And then they'll start dropping off. So get your gas generators gassed up, get everything ready. See what happens overnight. We have a meeting with schools. So they're prepared and they'll keep an eye on things and make a decision probably early in the morning. It's supposed to happen at school, but a lot of that's going to be powered. So it's just that. With the winter season, the city police department is asking everybody to keep safe and do the following during the winter. One, slow down. Two, leave plenty of distance with other vehicles. Allow for ample stopping time. Get out your windshield, roof, lights, license plates, et cetera. Police can use a couple of statutes for snow clearing. They can issue a $40 fine for repeated operation if a driver has obstructed windshield or windows. A $200 fine for driving with an unsecured load, which can include heavy sheets of snow, ice, or car's roof. Additional charges and liability can be attached. That still blows off and damages another vehicle or something else. So get out your cars. Be a little more careful when you're driving when the winter comes. Right now, it's a winter event for tonight. And also, I've got to tell everybody, we're expecting a second storm Friday night into Saturday. Again, wind and rain. Unclear what type of impact that will have. Keep an eye on that. Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Following town offices will be closed. Town hall, senior center, library, and the transfer station. Also, on Monday, the City Public Schools will be hosting their third annual Martin Luther King Memorial Day celebration take place at 1:00 PM in the Central Performing Arts Center. This week, on Thursday, January 11th, at 6:30 in the Select Board hearing room or by Zoom, the Plenary Board will be only a public hearing on zoning by law amendments and changes proposed for the annual town meeting on April 8, 2024. Those changes include minor modifications to the zoning by law for section 3A compliance for MTA communities and clarification of language in section 730.4 of the zoning by law and a special permit is required. For full text of the changes, you can find on the town website and the Plenary Board office on our file in the town. Next week, on Thursday, January 18th, there will be a public information session about a beach nourishment project that is planned to begin in February on No Situate Minded Beach. You'll join this meeting in person at the library at 6:00 PM or remotely on Zoom. You can find a link on the town website. If you'd like to submit requests ahead of the time, please email Corey Miles at cmiles@cititutma.gov. Meeting will be recorded and will be posted on the City TV YouTube page. This week, burning season opens, 1/15/2024. Open burning is prohibited in Minette, Camaroc, and any location east of Hadley Road. City Fire Department will strictly enforce state regulations. All permanent holders must comply by the rules will be understanding. The City Fire Department deserves the right to refuse or revoke any permit that does not conform to the rules for burning in situ. Those rules are on the town website. I'm not going to read all of them here, but there's a good much common sense. You don't do that. So burning season, one of my favorite times of the year of study, January 15. Town clerk once again wants to remind everybody that the annual town census has been nailed up. Please read both sides. Can't we sign and return as soon as possible? Returning the census shows voters will be made on the active voter list. May not use the census form to add voters to your household, make any changes to existing voters. Make a change to your voter registration address, name, ID, et cetera. May do so in person at the town clerk's office, online at registeredtovoteMA.com. The voter has moved within Massachusetts. They can register in a new community or online. They'll be updated for situ or whatever community that they moved to. If you moved out of state, the office will need a signed vote from the voter to be moved from the voter's list. Call the town clerk's office, 71545-8743, if you have any questions. City Sister Cities, that's my last best. Will be hosting their annual 2024 Sister City Film Festival at the Real Harbor Theater on January 11th, 24th, February 1st, and March 5th. Sushi Ambrive will be presenting Seren de Bergeret on January 11th at 7:00 PM. Chocolat on January 24th at 1:00 PM. Cape Verde, Santa Catarina, Del Fogo will be at the Volcano's Last Wish. That will now be on February 13th at 7:00 PM. That's a change from the original date of February 1st. And Island Muskoff will present My Left Foot, March 5th at 7:00 PM. Suggested donation is $10. Recreation Fund Summer 2024 Job Applications are now available on the Recreation Fund webpage and the town website for volunteers, counselors, directors, and lifeguards. To cititutma.gov, go to the recreation page. The applications are all in tabs on the left-hand side. Want to be a lifeguard? Now's the time. Sign up and get your application. We had a very lengthy meeting yesterday on the lighthouse. The discussion revolved around the grouting process. The lighthouse, if you get down there, you see the lighthouse is wrapped. That was because the grout needs to be kept above freezing temperatures for at least 14 days from the start of the grouting period. We were out there Monday morning. The temperature did not stay up over the weekend. And they found with the heavy winds that it was hard to keep temperature. So after much discussion, we've decided that we will not be doing the grouting injection now. We'll wait for the warmer weather when the, we're going to do the painting. So question whether or not I'm going to take down the scaffolding and leave it up. I was hoping to have it down for today, but scaffolding, company blues, it'll be okay. Right now, it's just not worth the risk to do the grouting and have it freeze. We're about to do a damage solution. We're just going to wait until the spring. We'll do it with the paint. Do it all at once. We had some good weather for that. Just couldn't get the contractor on it and immobilize. So we'll put off to the spring. We are putting off the painting anyway, so it's not putting off the whole project, but it would have been nice to get that done. By the way, the City Food Pantry, they have a list of new most needed items. Canned white beans, beef soups, baked beans, jello and pudding, hot chocolate, mixed vegetables, sloppy joe, white tuna, and green and herbal teas. They can be dropped off at the pantry during operating hours on the bins behind the old gate school. City Village, City Library, sorry, Village Market in Charles also played for the food painting. They are very grateful for everybody's help, but the need remains high, so we can help. Who's do so? Help out the City Food Pantry. That is what I have for the season.
Sounds good. Thank you. Matt June? You have anything, any questions?
Yeah, it's been a question that I would like to mention that apparently there are a lot of bins out of the golf course, so people should not be complaining more about being able to get through the golf place tonight. There are a lot of people who are very grateful for that. So thank you to the golf course and all the people. Thank you a lot of golfers.
Eric?
Just wanted to check if there had been any submission of a draft and a moving people asset.
There have been a lot.
So. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have there been any updates or any initial findings or how the happily that the sewer sealing project has been going on?
There's so being tight. So they get their budget tight. Kevin, give you an update on that? I think they're pretty happy with what's going on. As you know, it's going to take a little while of use to see how much we're actually getting out. But Kevin will be doing the update tight. I think they're pretty happy with what they're seeing. It's certainly news also pretty much. So Kevin, give you the whole thing.
Been very happy right now. I can't believe how much everything in one day happened. Pretty amazing. So hopefully, we're following.
Good. Good. Maybe it's done. All righty, then we'll move to our first agenda, which is to discuss and review adoption of the local option, $5,000 personal property exemption. Joe, Mr. Steer, I'm the director of assessing. How are you this evening?
Good evening. I'm well, thank you. How are you all?
Good. Well, I'm good.
I have five minutes.
I'll speak for everyone else.
Thank you very much for having me here today on behalf of the board of assessors. This is probably a long overdue local option article. So personal property is not only property tax that is charged to businesses, but also to residents, seasonal residents, or homeowners that rent out their home and furnish. So you pay, believe it or not, in Massachusetts, well, I'm sure you believe it, everything is taxed. And then there are exemptions. So your personal property gain your domicile exempt. But if it's not your domicile and it's furniture, it's taxed. What we're trying to do is eliminate hundreds of these tiny little bills that go out for under, you know, for $50 or less. Because this time of year, you know, we're pretty active. We just sent out the tax bills. I'm sorry about that. And so we're getting lots of calls on valuations. We're also getting lots of calls on exemptions. But at least a third of our calls are coming in on these small second home personal property counts. And we'd like to eliminate. By adopting this adopting and supporting this local option, we'd be reducing our count from 1,300 to 380 personal property counts. And the impact of that financially, that represents $22,000. That's it. $22,000. And we wouldn't lose that levy capacity or monies that would be spread out among all the other taxpayers in town, but it would be nickels and dimes. It wouldn't be anything significant at all. That's why we wanted to start with the 5,000, see how that goes. We're allowed to go up to 20,000. 220 communities in the state have adopted this, and seven out of 10 of the local area communities have also adopted and formed this. It would just, it would put our resources to better use. I'd much rather spend the one-third of our time that we're spending on this on helping more people get exemptions or answering questions on valuations and things like that. So we'd appreciate your support and that other group of assessingers as well.
Thank you. It makes sense to me. It was amazing to me that 97% of the accounts, I mean, 97% of the revenue only comes from 380 of your 1,300 houses. It's ridiculous.
It's your gas companies, gas company, your electric companies, and your cable. So it's eight accounts that, you know, are over, I believe, 78% of all the personal property tax.
Okay. And it looks like 5,000 is the average throughout the state.
It's between 5 and 10. I just thought, I'd rather, I'm conservative by nature, so I thought that 5,000 would be a good target and see how it goes. We can always come back to the to the select board as well as that meeting if it needs to go up.
Okay. Any additional questions with Joe?
I didn't think you were interested.
Thank you for the backup. I don't think you mentioned it. It was in the backup that, you know, the reallocation of resources is reasonable to do.
I think really, when you think about it, it's, it's the same answer. And I feel bad. And I feel almost embarrassed explaining it. Yeah, yes, you pay real estate taxes. Yes, you pay, you know, sales taxes. You bought that furniture. Yes, I know it's not brand new. And our calculation is based on the value of the house. We have reduced that because we can't go up to 1,300 properties and valid, you know, how this silverware dishes and things like that. So we, we, we use a point. They don't serve a rate, believe it or not.
That's actually my question.
It's just, yeah.
My question is, how are you doing?
Well, it's, it's, so the tax is raised by personal property, 1% of the level, or less than 1%, so 0.90%. So it, it doesn't make sense to spend valuable resources on the calculation and collection of data method, at least on second homes. So what we do is we send out a bunch of forms to homeowners every five years. They fill it out. Some people fill it out too well. And then we, we basically do an analysis. And in the past, values have been for single family homes, 2% of the value of the structure. That would become your personal property value. And for condos would be 1% because written on land value, it's all building value. This year's analysis cut that in half. So you may be getting calls from people that are getting like 20 cent tax bills or a dollar tax bills. I apologize. It's because of that analysis cutting the values in half resulted in people paying their annual personal property tax in the first two quarters. So that's going to eliminate that as well. So this would, this would just stop the phone from ringing at least the first of the time. Please, please, please.
No.
No, I worry about the bills under $2.00. Stamp along.
It's even worse.
Yeah, sounds good. This does not require a vote on the Apple board because it will go to town meeting.
But we'd appreciate your support. So thank you.
I think you're ours.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Joe?
All right. Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Chicago safely.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a donation of $5,000. Again.
It's a nice reason to be here.
This is our director, the senior singer.
See, well.
Very lovely letter.
Was a very lovely letter. And this doesn't happen a lot, but honestly, Carol really made it the donation to us. A gratitude, I guess, for the comfort she has received, both herself and her husband prior to his death. So I think it was a really nice testament. Appreciate it.
I was just going to say that she was always operating on that. So it's just a nice testament to the services that you can respect for us.
Yeah, we can. I think I really enjoyed saying.
I mean, a really nice environment over there, which is nice. So we do have a donation of $5,000 that's being donated by a recent widow resident. This is Carol Martin. She was appreciative of the services that the senior center afforded to she and her husband. So really, really nice.
Can I ask a little question here? Do you have any sort of book that you compile these sorts of testimonies in that could be available out at the front desk? I mean, obviously, we want the official person who sent the letter. But I think until you see a letter like this and are able to read it, it's, it really, it brings tears to your eyes, but it's such a good thing. And I feel as though while someone's sitting in a lobby or in that little area with the coffee place, that it'd be nicer to be able to look through and see someone who's like.
Try to maybe put some statement in the newsletter just that the patient might have to be in whose memory or who's on earth. It hasn't been a lot, really. I think it continues to happen. It starts to happen a lot. I would love to do that.
Well, and even if it doesn't come with running cash to some places, the sentiment is just as important when someone thanks you for, especially taking care of their loved ones who are, you know.
I actually, now that you've mentioned that, even without money, I get many thank you notes for this or that service that might have helped. It's the individual, whatever loved ones who are just.
Any other comments, questions? Right, any other motions? Move that the City Select Board accept a donation to the City Senior Center on $5,000 from Carol Martin used to expand its programming, one commission, and as you tell me by the senior steps. Second by Karen Canfield, all the favor.
Hi.
We appreciate you. Thank you, Miss Staley. Thanks, London. Back home safely.
Yes.
Good to see you as well. Okay, next on our agenda is Julie Connelly here this evening.
Yes, hi Julie.
Hi. Why don't you come forward? Give us a moment. We're just going to pull out your resume. Well, Julie's here to kind of read for a holding position on the conservation commission. Well. Let's go. It's going to look well. So while we're getting our, our feedback, Julie, thanks for calling. Karen, if you can tell us a little bit about your background and why you think you'd be a good fit up for the conservation commission. It's a very important community in town. It's got a lot of different details. So good luck.
Sure, sure. Yeah, sure. So I have been since now. I'm from Cape Cod, from the beach zone park. And I studied coastal ecology in school. My first job out of school was with the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Management. So I kind of laid down the foundation of the work that I do. Now, what I do is climate adaptation, climate mitigation, and vulnerability assessment. I've been in the field now for about 15 years. Prior to the private sector work, I'm in a consulting firm. I have been all over. I've worked for NA PC, which is a multi-billionary planning council. I actually wrote your first draft climate plan back in 2015, 16, I think, yeah. Which then, you know, was carried forward by predecessors at NA PC. That was a wonderful experience. It was the first time that I think the region even had a climate resilience program. I know when I came in, they basically asked me to run it, and it's, it's been a success ever since. I'm just really proud of that. I want to be able to give back to the community. I feel like I've done a lot of work in this area in New England. I've more recently worked in Jersey. I've helped in these types of situations, climate coastal areas over the past several years. And I just want to be able to give back locally. I will admit that ever since we put the fourth, the first draft for the Climate Resilience Plan together, I was a little weary of doing anything particularly for the town. Wasn't really sure where, you know, the town was at in terms of some of the forward-thinking recommendations that we were making. But being a resident and now seeing that come forward over the years, I think it's time. I was also a conservation commissioner in my hometown of Sandwich, Cape. So I have direct experience. And I dabbled a little bit in wetland restoration and had thought of getting my professional wetland science certification, but then that means I'll have to be sent out to the field, which I keep doing at this level of where I'm at in managerial. I manage a team of climate resilient engineers and landscape architects and planners for the firm that I'm working for now. So that's just going to be an option. But yeah, I, I love this town. I'd love to be able to get more directly involved, spend a long time. And I'd like to really help as much as I can because I think that the level of experience that I have would hopefully help to provide a lot of sort of professional service and information to the population. No doubt.
Great, you know, great resume, obviously. And thank you for your work on the plan. It's been great for all of us. Have you, I mean, obviously, you know, it's a tale of being on the commission. A lot of the volume, you should think the commission also does a lot of work outside of pleadings that they meet just because of the complexity of looking at the plans and looking at that. Do you have any concerns with what I do today, being a health and balance, being a productive member on the board?
I don't think there will be any conflict. I actually work partially remotely here from town. I go, we have a Boston office and I go there twice a week. But the majority of the time I'm here and I don't foresee there to be any conflicts or or even time constraints per se, with the caveat that the first I had two kids in the school system. So obviously, it's the, you know. You can manage. Yeah, no, I, I get it. That's what, you know, I was doing when I was in Sandwich. So I understand the needs.
Yeah. Questions, Julie? Eric?
You covered a lot and obviously so much of the laid-up whole experience, once you get awesome candidates coming in. This is great work. Have you sat in on any of our conservation hearings or meetings or met with anyone on the current board?
Unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity. I really, you know, like, like I said, now is the time that I have to be able to vote, you know, being in the meetings, doing the work. For the longest time over the past few years, the, you know, being a private consultant is very demanding. I was working 2 hours a week and traveling all over, but that's not really the focus of my position now. Definitely here in England, hoping to do a lot more work back in Boston than I've done before. So haven't, but I would like to.
Okay. Eric?
Well, I just like to comment. We do have a very impressive resume. And if it means anything to you, the work you're researching see is coming up all the time in our meeting rooms, our various projects. It's, it's like one of the number one words. So I will say that what you did then with years ago is still resonating and will resonate all along time. And it's definitely been a really impactful pathway. We're looking at, you know, for a project. There's a lot of issues related to resiliency and it's, it's reflecting the master plan as well. So thank you for that. I guess my other question, we do have two candidates tonight, and I don't, I don't think we have company on the books to advise from commission, but I could see real easy fit there. So it's just.
Sure. No, I'm also into that. I had, and I had contacted folks on the, the path prior, you know, pre-COVID. And then everything kind of fell apart for everyone, right? So, you know, I think that that is a logical fit of course as well. And thank you for your very kind words. I often wonder what happens to the plans that are written.
It's very much happened. Very much happened.
You know, so you have to just edit and notice some other things that we do. So.
Just a slow movement process, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah. There are two positions open on this for the advisory. I'd like to look here.
So.
Yeah. Okay. That's not. Do we, are we still yet, you know?
I'd have to, yeah.
On behalf of the board. Okay.
Depending on when you have to come to them.
Because when we get good candidates, we'd like to wrap them.
Andrew?
Don't want this. This is not a question. I'm curious. There's a lot of work that the commission does in business, but some of the trails. Do you have a favorite trail? Do you have any thoughts on the Apple Field and the big project that were, they kind of stalled out? Or did we start? Just got your thoughts on some of the properties that they own. If you're like, oh, really? The state of the trails or anything?
No, but you know, one of the things I think that would be really helpful is more connectivity and more connections. I mean, for instance, I feel like, you know, we have a dog and we go up to the, I don't even know what the field of the trail is called over across from the village. Down to the marsh. So the chapter's signage, you know, information, a lot of that is really needed because I think there's a lot of areas for folks to walk and bike and whatnot that are a long ways to walk, which is great. I mean, I think that's a huge start for this town. But I think that if there's some way to connect some of the more nature areas of, of our walks, that would be ideal. I have to admit, I'm not even familiar with the Alphamont State at all. I don't even know where it is.
But yeah, we have West End, so it's a whole.
Because we have friends. We have friends.
We have a fence. It's like a big community control garden.
Oh, intentional.
Thallow at the moment, but not for long.
Very even more, you know.
Great.
Yeah, I, you will answer my questions.
Yeah, I, you will answer my questions, um and thank you for, thank you for your application. So thank you for coming in, um we have two candidates for this position, so we'll, we don't vote till the end of the evening Julie, so you don't need to stick around. Uh you will too, but you don't need to, um because we love you till the end of the evening. But thank you, and if it doesn't work out, there is the Coastal Advisory, so if there is a position over there, we'd love to have your expertise somewhere. Obviously, you're incredibly qualified and to help the town in some manner, so we appreciate you coming forward.
Yeah, just please let me know, I'm open to whatever is needed and I'm happy to talk down.
Thank you.
We'll also mention.
Yeah, Lauren, we'll follow up with you, don't worry. Thank you, thank you Julie. Good night.
Cheers.
Thank you. Um okay, uh sorry. Eric? Eric, Eric? Oh, I can see you.
Oh, who are you?
Oh, great. So Eric D Tomaso, did I think it correctly?
D Tomaso, yep.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So you also are here to interview for the Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
So if you saw, we just asked if um you could just give us a little bit of a highlight of your resume and why you think you'd be a great candidate?
Yeah, so um been a resident of the city for my whole life, grew up in the West End, Grove Street. Um professionally, I'm a plant, soil and water conservationist. I have worked um towards earning my degree in environmental horticulture from New England, as well as my master's degree from uh Deener University of London in the integrated management of freshwater environments, where I was able to pair um my horticulture background, specifically organic land care with um
Speaking of that.
Well, yes, after then, it's uh in managing property for sure, a lot of those trails, well, they're all common actually. But anyways, uh was able to pair my environmental horticulture, specifically organic uh land care background with my master's degree looking at uh land management practices as related to seven inflow and nutrient inflow, including river systems. So professionally, I worked uh with those kind of greenway in Boston, they're organic land care specialists, where I really put together a lot of my foundation in soil science, especially looking at soils as a consistent, both chemically and biologically looking at inputs required to try and emulate natural process. Uh further about work with the Esbon Association, along Charles River in Boston. That also incorporated a lot of my freshwater background, given its proximity to the river, right, carrying a zone that had invasive species problems that required irrigation. Um and then more recently from Boston, I was the senior parks manager for the public garden, where we took care of the Boston Common Public Garden in Como, out in the mall. Specifically, I was charged to get in care of soils in all plants in those parts. Um primarily was turf and trees, but with public gardens, um wider range of plants there. Uh all of this is founded on my soil science background, managing later with our native plants, uh our native pollinators. Uh and that was a lot of my focus within those jobs in terms of my background educational. Um I also was managing projects along the river, Charles, Charles River Estuary, as well as managing contractors, both unstable and old utilities, and it's a wide range, and these full organizations that was matched up. In my VCR, all the I chose for that's been a high demand facility in Boston, so it's a free, it's a private, private creation partner. Uh way I might expand their conservation commission. Recently, currently, I'm a person doing all well on a farm. Where I'm back in private sector, one of the things that I appreciate about my previous work is that I was able to work for the greater good. Um and I'm still looking to scratch that itch. And participating in Situance Conservation Commission, something that really intrigues me, I think my background, both with landscape and structural issues, pairs well with all the work of Conservation Commission is charged with. And my interest in preserving situates natural uh resources as well as its beauty, not only for our residents, those that want to be here and those that don't yet, they're lost.
Well, thank you, quite, quite the resume as well, so we're so fortunate to have, you know, you've come forward, have its type of expertise. Is there, so one question, is there anything that you've either witnessed as the word, but observed of our Conservation Commission and, and rules or anything that you feel that, you know, you might be differently or the expertise could kind of help guide with challenges and if you've ever watched any meetings?
So I haven't watched uh Situance meetings, I'll freely admit. However, I have been a part of the whole Conservation Commission meetings as regards to our ongoing work and the orchard and the farm as well. Um so unfortunately, I haven't actively been involved with Situance.
I have some checks, no, a prerequisite, I just, I always like to get an idea of what you've had to, to serve.
No, but I think that my interest, especially in our native plants, uh both from coastal sense as well as our woodlands in West End, um our native trees, our native pollinators, our native insects, that really are integral to our bird populations across the town and state, um is vitally important. And I think that bringing that perspective to uh projects that are brought to the Conservation Commission can perhaps open up opportunities uh within those, those projects and when you're from the perspective.
David, you have other questions?
Just enjoy doing this, and then Julie and Eric, then so many fabulous things, I don't know. It used to be fun. No, I, I guess, I just loved your work, I mean, no, but I, while we're getting thoughts, we've seen it.
Yes.
Said they were ready to go.
Yep, I've seen it, um I saw the RFP posted, I forget how long ago that was, but I am familiar with the document. Um and because I saw the fence up there, my, it's me, my kids, interesting. Um because I run those trails, um there's some great trails in the West End. I grew up going down Bates Lane before water, I grew just begun as a child. Um and yeah, so I'm very familiar with the project, I'm excited to see what, you know, come of it, I would just love to catch it very soon.
Yeah, I guess my, to follow on the time commitment question, because it's in the committee that we meet every twice a month or plus they are requested to use onto a lot of other committees, plus they have Petros main thing, say you're out of main thing. Um so I'm just curious about your thoughts on.
Um I don't foresee a major conflict, but I am curious if you have an estimate on hours per month that the position might require.
I think, you know what, I think a lot with all of our committees, you could do it full time if you want.
Sure.
You know? And different people, you know, in, in, and, and the committees tend to, it shakes out with what's available there is, so.
I think they do a good job of developing, you know, based on project.
Committee.
It does some very.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask about the dynamic within and the collaborative nature of the current membership, how that.
That probably be more a question for the chair.
Okay.
You know, in fact, just to get an idea. Um I don't, I haven't seen any issues, but I don't know.
They seem, at least, I, I actually do watch the meetings occasionally. Um they seem to have a good board right now, there are candidates and issues, probably a few years ago where things weren't working as well. As they should have, but it seems like people pick up the projects and one of the, the person who's leading the board due to time commitment, um he was the Appleton Field person, so we're, I think, very interested in that.
Very interested.
And um we also have the Orchard Property that we bought about a year, two years ago maybe now, um which I think has the potential and really needs to be looked at. In addition to more, I like in property, which is not just, it's not just houses, it's the actual property is of the most value. And what we do with it and do it well, uh I think depends on your type of expertise.
Yeah.
Because the Conservation Commission itself is fairly lightly stacked. So they do lean on their officials, like the, you know.
They do more guard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So no, I hope that they do more guard.
It's very important work that they do, I mean, they're tasked with getting care of our environment, when you don't disruptly do something, you know, it was under it, so it's important to.
But thank you for agreeing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Qualification, you're caring.
Uh just one more, so they, again, thank you, and listen here, the keys, there's a real need, one of the things that is really a team work is, you know, exactly, that's a project and it's all sorts of bigger picture things. But I wanna ask you about the day-to-day responsibilities of the conservation. So they have to, every two weeks, there's an agenda this long, hearings of folks that wanna raise and build a house or buy a wetland, whatever it is. And that's, you know, that is applying law and bylaws to each application. There's not, there's not a lot of creativity there, but it lasts a bit, you have to do the homework, be understanding what the parameters are. Is that something you're comfortable doing as well?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that and interested in, in that space as well. Uh that was something that I was, uh, in my master's degree in London, I did work within Water Framework Directive that was basically the European Union directive for all other parties at the time, you know, UK laws. Um so interpreting that law and putting that to execution was something that did intrigue me. And again, that whole concept of me scratching that itch to get back to duty and work for the greater good is something I lost, I received plenty of change and I wanna sort of repeat that again. I am just seeing what they give, recover to, plus that passion and I think it's nice to see that. What's that gonna be a change?
Great. Eric, anyone else? Eric, you know, stellar qualifications, thank you so much, and thank you for being so thoughtful in responding. As you heard, um say Julie, we'll, we'll vote at the end of the evening and we'll get in touch with you. Um should it not go your way for this commission, is there any other committee or commission that you would be interested in as a second? Or is this job really passionate? Okay, that's good, there's no, there's no way wrong.
Thinking of offhand, but if an opening pops up, well, maybe Eric would be good to this, I'd be happy to.
We do that, so thank you. Thank you, coming forward?
Absolutely, thank you so much. Very good.
You too.
You too.
All right, so next we have uh Maranelle, and it's nice to see you, nice to see you, seen in a long time, you know?
We're just giggling because there's a bug here that we've been watching, but he stepped on it.
Crawling on the pond, is it a stink bug?
It was a stink bug.
I think it's a problemless. So really excited to have you present and a lot about this initiative. Why? So you're going to talk about supporting independent living, Sale?
Yes.
Um you are currently, you're moving on from the CDC.
Correct.
Uh so I don't, I'm sure if you're involved in it yet?
Yeah.
So I'll just turn it over to you and uh tell us all about this wonderful project.
To my right is Amy Pratt, and she is the Director of Development for Social Support Services. Social Support Services is our parent organization to Sale Home, which we are subsidiary of, and she's a founding member. And Wendy Ellison, who is also a founding member of Sale Home, and she is on the Board of Directors for Social Support. Welcome. So um we're very excited to be here, um we did go in front of the CDC. Um we asked for a million dollars of funding for affordable housing for our project at eight oh nine country way. Um they were very gracious to not only hear the application, but accept it in December, which was past the application timeframe, and unanimously um supported it. So they found the recommendation of going to every ward to, you know, get their support and also make the town aware of this very, very exciting positive initiative. So um just to tell you a little bit about it, the mission of uh Supported Access to Independent Living, we are a nonprofit and we are going to serve as a model to demonstrate how a pioneering approach combines services, training and housing to solve the challenge of meaningful affordable housing for individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism. Um it was reformed this because we need a housing solution to meet the demands of this growing population of individuals with disabilities. Um the incidence is on the rise across the country and in Massachusetts, in fact, Massachusetts has a higher incident rate of autism than most states, they're like number two. Um those with ADD, intellectual development and autism, they are not prioritized for um state housing, AKA group homes, unless they are not um safe in their own home or they don't have caregivers to take care of them. So when you really think about it, those group homes are really identified for emergency situations. Only fifteen percent of the population qualify for that. That means there's seventy percent of this population that really does not have any housing fee. And within that, um they're living at home with their caregivers. And almost a quarter of those caregivers are age sixty and over. So, you know, you can do the math, this is catastrophic, it really is catastrophic. Um so we felt the need, we need to do something privately and on our own, create our own answer to this housing crisis. So that is how we came up with Sale Home. Um we've been moving at a rapid pace. Um we got our articles in the corporation in October. We purchased eight oh nine Country Way Institute at the end of October and received a nonprofit status on the bill of the first. Um eight oh nine Country Way, I don't know if you're familiar with that building, but it used to hold AJA International. It's that green building on the left. By the M B T A.
Yeah, it was commercial though.
Yeah, it was commercial.
Yep.
Um it was primarily manufacturing and quite a bit of office space. Um I passed it every day.
Yeah.
I had no idea, also tons of cars in there, didn't know it was going. Uh but it went on the market and we, one of us was walking by it and we were looking for properties. And so once we looked at it, it is quite large and honestly, that's where I feed. Um and as soon as we walked through the property, we immediately were able to identify that this would completely satisfy what we had intended. And then more. Um it is zoned for mixed use, it will continue to be mixed use. Um we are not changing the footprint of the building, the only thing we're doing is repurposing the interior of it. So this is a little schematic of how we envision the space to be utilized. Um you can see various units, we will have four units for individuals with disabilities um that will house up to eight total, so it'll be eight bedrooms. All of those bedrooms count for affordable housing. Um in addition to that, we will have a caregiver unit, we will have a live-in to support the residents. Um you're going to have almost twelve hundred square feet of community space, which is um where we envision integration potential for our residents to just, you know, have yoga class. I have some kind of meetings, so it's not a commercial kitchen, but it'll be a big sized kitchen. Um so the idea is we look for integration, we want to integrate our community with our residents. So this is the space we can do it in. Um we have uh almost seven hundred square feet that are dedicated to a call center. Um that call center is going to be from Social Support Services. The call center is a twenty-four-seven um remote virtual platform that allows individuals with disabilities to access someone through a platform to assist them twenty-four seven. Um actually, you're gonna have any kind of expand on that? Um, actually going to have Amy kind of expand on that because Social Support Services currently uses this and individuals are using it. Um, we do use, um, you can talk about safe at home.
So we, um, we're one of the ten agencies that got contracted to do remote supports to the state. I'm one of the largest so far, but, um, so the concept is there's a huge staffing crisis right now. Homes aren't opening. Some of them are actually solidating. It's been a big issue. So, um, some other states do remote supports. Um, where, you know, we at Social Support go out to work with families, work with the individuals, find out what kind of calls they need. Do they need to get reminders to get up in the morning, get ready for work? Um, you know, what is it? Do they need a medication dispenser and a reminder to make sure that's been taken? Um, and right now, so we have twenty-five people. It's all now, it just started a year and a half without. Um, but we, um, have, because it's so cost prohibitive to start when on your own, all of us across the state are working with, uh, they call safe at home. Um, and they've had some issues. They roam too quickly. They, we're doing test calls now because they don't pick up when they're supposed to in two minutes, which is the whole process. So we have an EOHH as a grant and some other grants to open our home. We just kind of feel like if our local residents will be able to do the whole package more, you know, a person center instead of some states. So that will be housed there as well. And we may not get the EOHH test, but we're just going to keep trying because we feel it's important to try and do that ourselves. So each person that moves in will, we, you work mostly with DVS. I worked with DVS for twenty-five years, so this is my post-retirement. Um, but we, um, everyone will be funded by DVS. One for an assisted technology, um, that's one of the assessments they do and they get all of that, not from us, but from another agency we work with. Ring doorbell, smart up, and, you know, stove sensors that turn on the stove if you walk away. The days for, you know, hygiene. So each, that will be embedded in all the units and then everyone will also have remote support. So in addition to staff, they each got some staff from DVS too. So we'll be doing like the first combo of using mass help, using system technology, using remote support, using DVS. Already has ten alive.
So will it be an actual first hand twenty-four seven in that call center as well?
Yeah. There will be, yeah, more than one. They'll, you know, for twenty-five, at least be two to start and then we anticipate. So.
And the call center itself will not only service the eight people that are in that building, it has the capacity to service their surrounding communities and put it in situ.
So they already have a lot in situ.
In situ. So that is real, that's a plus for the community. Um, because there are individuals with disabilities that can, that can function more or less on their own, but with this support, I mean, it's another avenue to independence.
We, we support DVS and people in situ right now and hang on. What we, we say is the geographic area, because we don't have this call center yet. So the premise is that if there was a problem, there's a call tree and it would go to somebody who lives, knows a person who lives within thirty minutes or somebody who are on the rest. So our data back to carry is pretty small, so we.
The last piece on the, in terms of the space being utilized, this is some commercial space. We can have a tenant identified, um, in its free period. And this nonprofit provides, um, administration products to underserved communities. And if we should need more space, she just got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state to do this. It's Amber Roll. And what's really cool about this is that it allows our potential, our residents potentially to have jobs. Because they can then work for her, you know, doing packaging and distribution. And so it's a really.
They'll use, they'll use the warehouse.
It's a little, and there's a land, there's actually, uh, moving that there currently. So it seems that to be.
Yes.
So we're very excited about the space. Uh, and then how does it, what does it do for the town, Situ? Well, it checks your affordable housing. Um, it provides you with eight affordable units. Um, all of the rest would be, we toss and dine on this DVS. It would be about eight percent of what they told you your seat has security. Um, and then MBTA's only checked that box because, um, there are, uh, and it so speaks that you have X amount of multifamilies within the, the zone. And we are now creating a multifamily. So we would adhere to that because we're a border of that. And third, which is more of an intangible, we become a model for other communities. And I, I know Situ very well, and I know, having done other things in this community, how, um, aligned they are with this population and how supportive they are. And to be able to have Situ do this and be the model for other communities. And at this time, he was actually thinking about doing this. So, um, so of course I think this right, um, but I would be so proud to be able to be, have Situ if you don't want to do it. So, um, that's your benefit. And then I just did a quick capital project, uh, for you. Um, we secured the property from a private loan, um, acquisition from the investor. Um, Social Support Services, which is our parent company, um, provided us with twenty-five thousand seed money and capital donations as of January first. Only after starting in October, we have, um, a hundred thousand dollars potential funding. You see, I highlighted a million dollars from CPC because it would be so meaningful to us as we, oh, to our projected cost of development. Um, Amy's working on the HUD eight eleven disability application, um, which I don't, you know, we don't know, but it's, you know, we're working through that. We're making mass development on Friday to, to the building as a legalized building, um, to get some funding from them. And then, you know, the rest of it is we will look for all kinds of grants and funding to supplement and the goal to get this whole project paid for.
Well, quite, quite impressive. You can't think of a better, you know, public private venture, uh, you know, Maranelle, we're leading this, you know. I'm sure we possess.
You possess talent, I know.
Yes, I'm sure she does. I, I do have one question.
Sure.
Um, so aside from the capital investment, to get the start, you're going, what does your annual operating cost look like? And do you have any concerns about needing to maintain?
The sustainability, um, I'd say first of all, we are a subsidiary of Social Support. That's a twenty-two million dollar company. So we do have that as our backer. Um, but in terms of sustainability of it, the, um, this particular property, when we look at the rental income that will come from it, um, we're projecting about, um, forty thousand dollars coming from our two tenants. And then obviously the, um, income that will come from each individual tenant. And then there will be, um, we will look at the fees that will maybe need to be added to that from, for support services. So we have no problem with that.
I, I just wanted to add too that all the, whether or not, so I did housing for the state for a long time. And so everyone is on that, um, list for a housing voucher. Everybody is qualified for a housing voucher. It just takes many years. Um, but they're starting to, I'm getting calls all the time. People are starting to get them now. So over time, when people have subsidies that they can apply to it, I mean, I think the rents that people will pay now and the rent coming to tenants will sustain it. But the rent that we will get in the future, section eight subsidy as well allows to do. So we'll be able to build up some revenue to be able to help other people do the same.
Excellent. Just have my last question, then I'll turn it over to the board. Um, what's the definition of IDD? What's the breadth of that?
Intellectual Development Disabilities. Um, so this is, I don't know, Amy, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over.
I've been doing this for a long time. So under the DVS, um, so DVS used to really just be, I'm really allowed to say this, but honestly, the eligibility was generally people with an IQ or less than seventy. Um, and they have, over the last several years, broadened their, that's why they, they're doing the Department of Mental Retradition to developmental services because it includes now people with autism, who are really, some people quite skilled and there's so limited to that.
And IQ.
But people who need support, you know, and it could be a little support or a lot of support. There's such a range. And then they also have included, but we won't be doing that, but they've included a part of brain injury as well. So back in the day, if you got R accident before you were eighteen, you got services. If you were eighteen in one day, you didn't get it. So they have through a lot of that, I see through people expanded, but we will focus on the ID and autism, whatever combinations that may be.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Susan, did you, I'll start with you, or I could go too.
Oh, you can do it.
Oh, this is amazing. I'm so excited.
It sounds a little overwhelming.
No, it's, it's, I'm, I come work in, um, I actually work for Mass Health for quite a while.
Oh boy.
I am familiar with all this.
You know this, then.
I do, I do. So I'm very excited for the project and excited that Situ is going to.
Yeah, we're going to look at PCAs when that's revealed and, and adult foster care. So we're working on all, you know.
But, but also I, I don't think any of us whose kids have the potential to live there think this is going to be a free ride for us. We know it's going to be private pay for a while until, you know, there'll be rent or whatever that, you know, we're, you know, our individuals only get so much from the state. We're going to have to supplement that. Um, and I think everybody understands that, at least initially. You know, we're hoping it will go down as time goes on, as we raise more money and they qualify more.
We want to duplicate it in communities, but that's not an option. So we're just trying to have, we've got a group of people who are really dedicated. So that's the best way to pilot something with everyone realizing the risk and, you know.
This is not a group home funded by DVS. So just going to be clear, I get everybody on the board that that is not the case. Just so you know too, group homes, um, when openings come up, so I'm just being to my son, for example, if he even make her, well, she does not and would not. Um, he would go wherever is available. So that can mean Tommy, you know, with a range of, um, housemates that don't at all mirror him. So parents that clearly brought us together to say, we want our individuals to have a choice of where they live and who they live with. And stay in the community. We've all worked hard in our communities to, to build a tremendous network of support and, you know, this is what we want to do for our, our kids.
Thank you for this. Um, I'm just curious, have you gotten any pushback at all?
We wanted to blow them last time.
There are things that I think that are amazing with a pushback.
We, they're actually, I used to be the one that had to stand in front of groups of neighbors, that they would be able to do that, burn their house down. I mean, I, I didn't agree with that. And this is so much in many senses.
We have talked to, not formally, but I have talked to the Butters. Um, we have a developer on one side of us who's got no issue. Um, the other side is a private home. We've spoken to them. They are a hundred percent on board. And the Butters across the street are, it's AJA International, who we purchased from around.
Right.
So it's not, we don't have any issue there.
No, I don't. It's going to be a hell.
Really exciting.
Support us for CTC. That's right.
No meeting.
No meeting.
And did everyone read the article and load just?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Oh, it's about the housing crisis.
Yeah. The timing right now is amazing.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I mean, having been at DVS for twenty-five years, I mean, they, they don't know what to do. I mean, it's, it's, it's really challenging.
Thank you for the time, yours.
Yeah.
Eric. Um, I'll say your timing is fortuitous because, uh, CPC just sent in five hundred thousand dollars that had been allocated for replacing windows at, um, Lincoln Park.
Oh boy.
And, uh, Lincoln Park Administrator, who's now gone, had applied for a grant from state to replace the windows, which are sorely needed. And they did get a grant. So five hundred thousand dollars going back into the housing. Okay, so like your timing is really, really good.
Everything's worked so well.
I hope you're bringing this body. So you've been very patient so far.
It does fit in with the whole MBTA zoning thing that we're, we're struggling to make sure that we comply with. And, um, it's, I know CPC has, we did loss and drain, which is a great project, but, you know, we have our additions through more in terms of housing. And I think everyone agrees that housing is really important, especially for all of the populations when, when you down. There's probably going to be a waiting list for you people.
Not enough, because you're always.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do. But thank you for doing it. And I know I wish you all the love.
Um, so I'm sitting here listening to this presentation, Eric, and your backup was wonderful. And I reflected that it, and sometimes the right idea comes along, the right form, the right key. And it all, it looks like magic, but we know much proceeded this moment. And after your comments about our community, I'm very proud of that too, that, um, I would be surprised if I was back. Because, you know, so many, um, are creating, we have worked for so long to be inclusive, you know, for decades.
I know, but I was a co-founder of course.
Yeah.
And back then, almost nineteen years ago, and I never imagined that the intangible that came out of that was this amazing community that supported all of our kids. You know, these were not just families with individuals with special needs. These were our entire town. And they came forward with ideas. I want to do horseback riding for you. I want to do a swimming program for you. And we were just like, wow. So I am not letting my son live this.
Also, because we're digging out those last time, I just wanted to mention too, really cool, um, we have social support to be, uh, work, support programs, one of Cohasset, one in the end. And the one, uh, Cohasset called lunch, they've got some grants from the elder, um, uh, community. And so it's called the Elder Concierge. And so some of the people that are supported by that program go to Lincoln Park and walk dogs and buy groceries and do friendly visits. So they're already somewhere connected to the neighbors next door.
Let me go and see who's that.
The only question I have, and I have no doubt that you have the rigorous application process, but I would presume that Situ it residences are required, will get, are you ready?
It is designed based on proximity to the, the property. And also, yes, geographic, and also it has contingency about the day programs. Um, we're, you know, all of these individuals attend day programs and work between night and break because that's part of our staffing model. Um, and again, proximity. And we actually do have three potential Situ that will be.
The only thing I would add to that then, if it's the geographic, you put the ten on this circle, is that another funding source for you to afford one thousand people has to. Um, it's going to be a benefit for their community as well. And it will be.
Thank you.
For still like that.
All right.
Great.
Well, um, I'm sure you'll get our support. So thank you for your time and, um, book the articles when they come before us and when the CPC comes to Florida. So thank you all to three of you for your, your leadership and your passion and what a, what a great solution. I hope to see it replicated.
You'll be invited to the open.
That's right, yeah.
We're on the planning board. We're working on the planning board.
Good, thank you.
Very helpful, very helpful.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much for your time.
Um, all right.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Yeah, we are great.
Good night.
All right.
What did I hear? Take your glasses. I gotta go back here. I don't know. I gotta answer. You know, one of the tripwire ones? He said, please. And that is good. All right. So Heather, we have your entire staff here.
Well, almost.
Almost.
Almost. We're missing Will, unfortunately. He's in St. Thomas at his sister's wedding. So that was, that was a good excuse.
You didn't make it today?
Zero on the budget.
Yeah. So, and then Eric came in and he was sick as a dog. He coughed and said he was fine. I said, come on over here. I said, you know, I said, they're not gonna wanna see you. Get out. And they leave.
That's much more pleasant.
So.
What did you say?
So I'll introduce everybody obviously. Eric, you know Mike Crane, our head of way superintendent of public grounds. Catherine Kelly, Kat. She's the assistant water superintendent. And then you know Sean McPathy. So Kat was here anyways to help with the next contract, one of the contracts and one of our updates. So by older, she gets to talk about budget because then he made a question. You know, how does that kill me?
During their favorite thoughts.
So. So that's what we have.
All right. So do you wanna start with four eleven engineering?
Sure.
Do you wanna just, I don't know. Okay, never. But we're good.
Because of storm and everything else, we'll try to keep it, you know, keep the minimal updates and what's going on. And I'll let Sean talk.
We should ask the new business. Twenty-four weeks.
For a lot of packages.
Yeah, preparation. And this one may involve us as well with the coastal issues. And they talk about flooding. So we'll be keeping an eye on it some walls. But we continue to issue contracts for the other departments, oversee contract projects. We did the bid for the cabin replacement that's scheduled for next month at the three big plant. Assist other departments with stormwater improvements, sidewalks, chasing grant funds when available for different projects. We are sitting on one for a seawall on Ocean Side Drive in Turner right now. And that's being, the construction is being held up by permitting. We closed out a couple of water main projects last year with punchless items. Sits at the Hager Master with his dock replacement project. Navy worked on the dark part.
On the.
Any major question, any concerns?
Is that it, Sean? Concerns, yes?
Yeah. Got the highlights, yeah. It's okay.
Risk, your biggest risks and challenges?
Staffing was a little bit difficult this past year, only with the different projects. And the shortage of staffing for the whole piece of the year. Just it changed the priority of, of some of the projects this year. Some of the active ones that needed full-time coverage. Put the office down for one person, it died one person. But managed to get through it this year. And keep some of the paperwork moving on the inside. A lot of the fall time, winter time, you're actually preparing for next year. So you're putting out the bits, the RFPs, so that next year you have the construction up there.
So it looks like our budget for fiscal year twenty-four, the seven or eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-eight. You requested to increase that to eight forty-six. If you change it, a hundred thirty-four thousand. Yet the ton weight freighter is recommended three hundred twenty-eight thirty-two. It looks like the biggest offset is saying, row the sea walls. It's there there. Is that really?
There was a, a additional salary request from additional person that.
And hours too, right? They were printing hours and one person.
So the increases are only contractual for the final budget.
And we requested hours because sometimes on these construction projects, probably set the tendency to be much longer than the average day out day. And one of the cost for some of that stuff goes on.
So right now you have two engineers, three engineers, right? Sean, Matt and Dan. And you were requesting one additional, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt there. This is one of the areas that we're gonna take a look at. Oh, we've been seeing. Questions for Sean? Steven?
No, I would look forward to this for the budget, for that additional hours. Because I definitely, I do have a question. If you, if the project goes longer, would you just stop the project? If they have to leave? Because I know the engineer has to be there while they're doing some road work.
It turns into like a problem for us because sometimes what we'll have to do is we'll have to take one engineer and work out of the day and then bring another engineer to do it the other day. So we lose two people covering the project sometimes.
Okay. And the forty hours wouldn't solve it?
Forty hours would help because your average project is forty hours anyways instead of thirty-seven.
Right.
And that's one of the things we're looking for. And then contractually, they're, you know, they're subject to overtime. So, you know, we were thinking of the overtime would help cover. If you, if you charge it off the project class, that would be great, but we can't. And it's a lot cheaper with our own people than it is hiring somebody on the outside. We could pay somebody, you know, of engineering firm a hundred and thirty dollars an hour to oversee the job when we could do it with our own people for, for this house.
Thank you.
Andrews, you have anything? Eric?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, there, there hasn't been any overtime for like actual job a couple of years.
No.
So that contractually, there's, it's built in? I don't understand it.
No. So what we've been doing, so I have, say, two hundred names. Sean has two hundred names. He's got Dan and then he's got Jeff. So what he'll do is if it starts at seven, you might say, Dan, you're gonna work from seven to one. Jeff, you're gonna pick it up from one for that. So you, in essence, you're using two people to cover the job.
Thank you for that.
While you, you don't have a comp time. You don't, or, you know, we'd say, okay, if you work, we could maybe give you comp time, but that gets a little sketchy.
Would staffing wise, would be an extra body? If you had to choose between adding more hours to existing units and adding a new person, what would be more venom? I mean, we, I think you're, this is on a shortlist because we've been talking about how to support this for a while.
I mean, we'd rather, we'd prefer the extra body because in the summertime, our, you know, winter time, we could use them for that person for other things. For example, like we've got the mine in Beach Park in the last. And unfortunately, I got both people out on, we get, we watch, we get jobs. So nobody's working on the mine at Three Park in the last. And everyone's like, oh, it's not done yet. We don't have the manpower. So that's, that's like one of the options, one of the things that come up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can someone explain to me why the FY twenty-four annual community budget number was seven hundred and eleven thousand? And the county administrator recommendation for this budget here is going to be twenty-three thousand? I mean, it's not just the four hundred, which maybe someone explain to me what that is. But what else are you cutting there?
He's also, he's also asking for another person that we didn't budget. Let's take it out of the overtime, yes, one.
All right. So I, I mean, I guess I've been getting confused as to which departments have presented us with budgets that don't include additional personnel versus others that do include it. And how are we doing level when the FY twenty-four budget was seven hundred and eleven? And now it's gonna be three hundred and twenty-three thousand? That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, they took the roots.
It's separating the season.
We'll move to one and see more of the seawalls.
And where are you putting that? Nowhere?
Nowhere.
Okay. No, I think Karen, to your point, that's a problem. I've even worked me through the financial forecast and how much we can dispose with any changes. Because that was a, the four hundred thousand is an obligation to our taxpayers.
We, we used it a couple of years ago. One year, and we put it back. It's not here, put it back. But ninety, seventy budget to people. So you just gotta talk, we had that kind of money. It's gotta be people off the door. It's just the way the path works.
It's a problem. Yeah, no, certainly. And I know that that's what's been adjusted by our forecasting, meaning, you know, this department needs, needs it out to keep these, and a couple of others as well. So are we having a separate meeting to talk about where we think we can add personnel to what departments based on the financial forecast? Are you waiting for any additional numbers to come in, Jim?
We were waiting for the new state A member of command based upon what's happened the last couple of days. I don't expect that. It might come up just because of the millionaires tax. So there might be some increase in the chapter seventy, but a large increase in, I'll be straight today. I don't think this is, they were talking one set maybe, so it's not gonna be. So we're waiting on that and we're waiting to see. At the MMA, we'll also get a better understanding of our health insurance number. Just covering that.
So what we'll do is what we always do, right? Is keep our list top of the line. So after we evaluate all the budgets, we'll make sure before we approve anything, all right, to talk about where we eventually adjust those things back. Okay. All right. Yes, thank you. But yeah, this one definitely is check out. It's been, yeah, a big hit. Yeah. What are the actuals today for roads and sea walls for this year?
How much have they spent? It's not that much money because they're going to be their projects first. It's mostly kind of the conferences or shore. Roads really hasn't given it all.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good question. All right. Anything else with engineering? No? So Kevin, next administration, four twenty-one? Or you tell me how you thought of that?
No, we can do GPW administration. Nothing extraordinary in that budget.
Yeah. So you've got a budget request of two thirty-nine, two thirty-two, and that was approved.
Yeah.
So it was a perfect amount of price.
Yeah, of course enough.
Any questions about that?
And I do love this, the cost per family breakdown. It's always very, but that's.
We've got.
Well, that's good. I know. Well, we've seen those.
Love it. Yeah. I've knocked all the way to highway already.
You can share, you can share some of those costs for families. I think it's a positive call. You gonna do it, Kevin? You want to, want me to?
I'm trying to find my tape.
So I'll, here it is.
You tell me when you're done.
The largest opponent is highway ground, two and a half million projected cost for the year. And we have eighty-two hundred four families that are served. So that work comes to three hundred and seven dollars per family is spent on our highway and grounds maintenance through your annual town budget. And the smallest is snow and ice, which we hope is always the smallest.
My pleasure.
At a half a million and same number of families that possibly, each family sixty-one dollars a year to have the road, the snow and ice bedrest. And I think it's poor all of the breakdown. So the smallest family share is sewer department because I'm very, we now have sewer. And so that with the three thousand families served is about fifteen hundred dollars a year in the budget. It goes towards, per family goes towards sewer services. Just being stat points.
We've done some stat points in the past. I'll try to shop my pencil next time. Figure out the average cost per road, how much is spent for the road.
You don't have that much.
That's, that's very interesting to see that.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Go to highway?
Okay. So the highway budget, it's, you know, Mike Crane's, he charged the highway. He also cut public grounds. He did request for no employing for highway to keep up with puddles, maintenance, signs, everything else. And I believe the biggest thing was a thirty thousand dollar deduct from the main. Right? That are biggest. We had, we had contractual obligations for, for highway for salary. That's, you know, that's about it. Otherwise, we try to keep this level sustainable.
So it's like the additional person highway approved here, correct?
Yeah.
No? No question.
That'll be the track from the pieces.
Okay.
So it's on the FY twenty-four.
Yep.
FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Twenty-five, right?
Yeah. They didn't ask for anything at the highway. They asked people public grounds.
Well, Mike, thanks. Your team does a great job. You do a great job. What do you think, you know? Looking at our roads, what's your biggest concern? We got enough done, you know? I think roads are our first impression.
Can I get a couple of those first?
When it comes in?
Can I get a couple of those first?
Uh, no. Actually, no.
No, I had, you know, I think we're trying to get, use the money as wise as we can. Bob and Kevin's, we go around, check all the roads that we think we can get and make sure that, you know, we're doing water lines or sewer lines or everything and, and all the gases done. And if we have that, we're gonna try to as much as we can. If roads looking good.
What percentage of our roads would you say still need some decent attention? So, you know, we do concentrate on main thoroughfares, right? And I think, you know, there are a lot of different public roads out there that are smaller that probably don't get the attention that we can afford to them. So curious how you prioritize that beyond if the water and sewers are done. Obviously, that's number one to look at. You know, how do you, how do you prioritize those?
It's kind of lazy for us because we've been facing the water and still work as it goes. We're paving as, as that happens. Like for this year, we're gonna replace the water line with Jericho. So you and I, we're gonna do Jericho. You know, I mean, yes, there are some small streets and other streets that need work. One bus driver's recently asked me to go for a bus ride with him on Turner Road and walk him down Turner Road about a time or two. And I said, oh, I know it's bad, but we know we have school problems there. And we're gonna be lining and we might be digging it up. So we're not gonna spend the money paving the road until we get that infrastructure.
Do we have timing at Turner Road, those sorts?
Susan?
Timing?
It's gonna be in the next, the next INI contract. We'll be doing work, they'll be calving it and figuring out what's going on. And if we can't, if we can't do cleaning, lining, we'll be cleaning lining. We may have to dig up our sections of it up. So until we know for sure, until the work is done. Because sometimes they do the cleaning, lining, and the liner can get stuck or something can happen. They wind it up. So we don't want to put any movement and, and do it if that's possible. But I will, I'm gonna just say, Mike and crew did a fantastic job when we did Front Street this year. That was a big challenge for the highway department. Took a lot of heat and Mike was getting yelled at by more people than I can think of. But, you know, they, they got through it and, you know, we got it done, they were really happy about that. It, it came on ice and, you know, they, they really did a fantastic job and heard a lot of grief and even Mike getting the two pavers at the same time and getting all the money, they did a great job.
We appreciate that, getting rid of how we all think it was, right, pulling that out. You know, we always appreciate the work that you do and what the team does and again, just to treat that you know, deep, deep pockets to be able to get some of the stuff, you know.
Yeah, we love building things, we would, we'd love to pave every, every road in town and make our lives a lot easier. Free up a lot of guys from doing puddles.
Yeah.
But we managed it the best we can, the costs have gone up significantly, significantly in asphalt costs over the years. You know, it's just amazing with what it's gone.
A big challenge that we have is, I remember going back to the developed Patrick administration, chapter ninety was two hundred million dollars. One year during the Baker administration chopped up to three hundred million dollars, otherwise the Val Patrick took off in two thousand seven. Chapter ninety's were two hundred million dollars. And paving a mile of road, two thousand seven, paving a mile of road, twenty twenty-four. There's an astronomical difference in cost. So this year, we are fortunate that we're getting what's called a fair share, which is an additional three hundred and forty thousand dollars in millionaires taxes for education and roads, we're adding that this year, but just, you know, Mike not keeping up, the assistance we're getting is not keeping up with what we need to do.
Right.
And when you look at, you do a road maintenance plan, we'll tell you, when you have a road in fair condition or poor condition, leave it alone. It's a cost too much money to bring it up to good. Keep all your good ones in good condition, the worse the road gets, you don't spend money on it, it's too expensive to fix. It's almost kind of until.
And it's not sustainable because eventually it becomes so bad that it's gonna cost you more to repair it, match.
So we'll do have some extra money this year for, for rocks.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, I'll start, I just, two things, one, this is really more of a, as Jim always says, everyone complains about the road and he fixes the road and everyone complains about the speed. So Clapham Road I see is on your, on, you know, a big chunk of it is on your radar, two hundred and twenty-five. Not for you guys to think about, but then I think we need to really make sure that we figure out, and that is an area that we get complaints already for people going through fast, trucks going through, all that stuff.
On our radar, the cost to do it might be more than we can afford for what we like, it's something we would like to do. Because one of the areas we're probably, you know, we're gonna focus on some of the water lines or something. But we'll, we'll see, that's our ideal, it would love to get, but we'll have to balance what we have for the dollars.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, if it goes forward, we're gonna have conversations about speaking for.
Anytime we do a road like that, as we're wrapping it up, last one would have been a whole little bucket. We wrap it up a little bit bucket, I send emails and calls to Chief Thompson and said, it's done, it's gonna be a Speedway, so we get people up there. We should have tested, also we've got a bunch of grants for the R E R signs. That are good, but after a while, people are, yeah, it's just a sign, so every now and then you gotta put a cruiser with the signs and it's all keeping down. Always on my radar, we finish the road, it's any type of throughway. We talk to Chief Thompson, let's catch his rap out, maybe if he gets a spot on that.
Everyone doesn't do what I do and say, whoop, that follow exactly with a little blinky lights. I'm a little fella. The other thing, and we'll get, I don't know if we might talk about it in an hour, we can get to the public works, but, uh, public grounds, but I just wanna call out, so in the, in the stats of accomplishment, this is for the public. The, there are sixty-two trash barrels in this area. During season, there are seventy barrels on the beach areas and twenty-five recycled bins around town that are all addressed and maintained and emptied by the highway department. Yeah, and I, you know, that's why I didn't know which category. Yeah, same umbrella, and, you know, as you know, I'm sure you're getting the calls that we, we, before the spring, we're gonna have a conversation about the beach barrels and make a decision about that. Should the board go with the cake and say, you know what, we're gonna be in cash, if you carry in, carry out on beaches? And we, you know, maybe we don't eliminate seventy barrels, but we reduce them significantly. How does that impact your staffing for the summer at all? Or, or what do you do with the reallocated resources?
Significantly, because it would free up, we have two men on a truck every day that spend all six, eight hours every day. Driving around picking trash up, I mean, they would still have to pick up because we still have to do business districts, like we would have that time and half.
And those resources could be used for?
For cutting grass, for tree work, for marking. You know, we get to a point sometimes where it's like, do we mark the, do we mark the soccer fields or do we, you know, which we gotta choose between what we're gonna do and people get mad at us, oh, the soccer field weren't marked out, we marked that out, or whatever. So there's, there's plenty of doing public rounds, so it's gotta pop in all the time.
And as a service to the town, which do you think is more value if you do it?
It's kind of torn between who you talk to, some people say that beaches are, are, you know, most important thing in town and, and other people say, you know, they'd rather have money in fields, so that's why we look to you and
handing it right off, sorry.
As many barrels as we have, because it's still overflowing all summer long. We put out twenty barrels, it's heavy and it's still be, you know, stuff all over the place. So the guys spend a lot of times, just not trimming the trash, but picking, pretty hand-picking, loads, it's all over, all sorts of people. So it's a big, big catch for us, but, you know, we will give us beaches, the guys can try to peek at the spring of pay and take out the sun.
So we are almost getting to a point where it's turning into a full-time job of, you know, just, just cleaning up the beaches and everything else. It is taking a move from other things.
I think we should probably sit down and talk about it before, you know, and come up with a solution later for just spraying. Just so, if, if there's gonna be a change, we do go carrying, carry out that we have a plan, you know, we don't just rip all the barrels that we put the signs up there that's coming, so people get used to taking it out, whatever, I'm not gonna go through it tonight, but it is a really, which we do. And that's it, because I personally think as a municipality or town, we should be cleaning up our sidewalks and our streets and our beaches to, you know, but I understand also it's a shared responsibility, I'm all for carrying, carrying out, but I, I still want to make sure our town is clean. That's our responsibility.
I think we almost have to phase it in, try it, so we'll see how, or as possible to say, all right.
Yeah, agreed.
It's still not cleared enough, because hopefully, you know, because the guys that go around either the water barrels, we're gonna have to check on beaches every day, so we check.
Ninety-five percent of people do.
Yeah.
Five percent.
Well, yeah. Yeah. All right, Karen?
Yeah, I just wanna suggest that maybe if not at all or nothing, then maybe to phase it in, you could simply say, people, we will take your replacables, so we have a place for you to put your pots and pans and maybe even highborn, because we all love pizza boxes, beach. And, and say, say to everyone, other than that, you have to take it home with you. So you're reducing the amount of stuff you're asking people to take back with them. On the other hand, you know, recycling is a good thing anyway, so maybe there's a, a problem in this here.
So I, I do have a horrible fact for that.
You can't take, you can't box the stuff.
No, you can now, that's, that's fairly legit, those are fully recyclable. But a lot of times what happens is people stuff trash into the recycling. So it ruins the whole load because I don't have guys that go and store all the trash and empty it up, they wind up all going into the trash when that happens.
Well.
It's not always a hundred percent that we get pure recycling.
No, I, I understand that, there are a lot of people that don't do the right thing ever.
I mean, the kind of dog, the old dog.
We, we, we can't discriminate, everyone is the lowest percentage of nightmare. And I think if, if we give people what is a reasonable alternative, we're not asking you to take everything back with you, but the stuff that we can recycle, and which I know we have to be recycled these days, which is another whole story. But it just seems to me as though it wouldn't be as draconian as saying, no barrels, no nothing, just take it with you. And I think a lot of people appreciate being able to recycle, so just suggesting.
No, and, and we're all far, just, I was just saying, it's, you know, it doesn't always work out as great with like the whole.
Believe me, I'm sure you're absolutely right, but.
A step, a step, no, okay, can you hear me, anything?
No, good.
Okay, anything additional for highway?
No.
All right, snow and ice, our favorite topic for this meeting.
They are stick to one dollar.
So we've already dipped into the budget, we rode, we rode the last storm this past, past weekend. Did a lot of ice, the guys had a great job, we scheduled the guys, we really go, we went around and around, we were just getting guys, we brought a couple of sanders in, we handled everything, we were all set, we came back in the next morning and we wound up bringing all our guys, we didn't bring any contractors in and went, I'll push everything back, that solved it all. The biggest problem we have, we probably would be better off six inches of snow, but the ice, we use a lot of material fighting the ice. On ice, we pre-treated, but, you know, it turned to rain, weatherman said it should turn to snow first, but we wound up getting raining first at all and it took out some of the brine speech. But, yeah, but if, you know, it, it's a treat to hold town, it's very reasonable and, you know, when it works, it works, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes it did, but overall, it was a good experience, we have a lot of new people and they're learning their roots. So we're worried about tech camel walks because we do have a lot of new drivers, so. I mean, they're all, they're all good, but, you know, they, you know, if you seen trucks driving around and wondering what they're doing with that plow line, you know, I told Mike, get all our guys out and just start driving their roots when they get free time, so they get comfortable with it. Because sometimes these guys have never gone down these streets before and they don't know how to turn around, especially when you have a truck and then you add a plow, it becomes a lot longer, it becomes a lot out of the mood, especially with the sand from the back. So you think you could turn around normally in public, but if you can't, it takes a three or four months.
Okay. So our request is five hundred two thousand, we know seventy, not a hundred as we're required to do. Okay, any questions?
I have one question. What's the cost to treat the whole town of what?
Where's what?
Well, the.
So the brine, we, we figured it out a couple of years ago and it was under a thousand dollars to treat the whole town. I wanna save it like six hundred dollars because a lot of it's water and we mix the salt in. So, and we don't go down every street, we say we do the whole town, we do, you know, we have one truck with a, a jet on, we do all the main streets, we do a lot of side streets as many as we can, it depends how much time we have. But usually, we can make some brine, do, do a lot of the town, a lot of mains in other areas for, you know, say six hundred bucks and do some parking lots in some of these areas. So we take that chance, sometimes we do it and it might rain, oh, we lost, but, but it's, we potentially saved a lot of money. We, we can put the sugar in the last.
Did you watch, did you watch our latest video Seth put out? It was pretty exciting, so we, yeah.
That was for the folks at home.
Yeah, so, so thank you for watching because we're very excited about it, it was a great interview. So we do, we have a special material we add for the salt, what we do is we, we make it a super salt and it's got magnesium chloride in it as well as corrosion inhibitors in molasses, makes it stickier, and the guys put it up. Again, we go to snow school, I tried to get all the guys to snow school and when they came up with it and we started talking about that we're gonna do it, they said, this is the stupidest idea, it's never gonna work, blah, 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 now you can ask Mike, Mike, all those contractors. None of the guys blew out unless they have the super salt now.
Then the next day from the storm and we're all spraying it and mixing and getting it ready for the next storm.
Smells great, smells like cookies.
Smells like. So Seth just did a video, we did a great job on the video and it shows how we do it. One of the other things we have.
Where's it posted?
It's on YouTube, yeah.
S C T V.
S C T V.
Sorry, Seth.
So we actually did two videos because we interviewed a couple of guys, they're gonna be on a future one, Seth did one quick one to get it out for the storm. And then he was also interviewing a couple of guys that are in the trucks and explaining some of the stuff they do, which is, which is gonna be interesting.
Do we push that stuff out on Facebook?
Yeah, I thought it was.
Like, like do we say, hey, there's a new video.
Oh, Captain's all over, she was, she was so excited about it, she was, you know.
We must have been ready.
Not everyone's gonna know that, talk about it, like.
No, it's, it's.
We can both watch this video.
It's, it's awesome, I, I mean, we love it. And we have, one of the things I didn't bring up, which I wish I did in the videos, I was, I, I got there and Mike was already giving all the information away, so, but.
Mike stopped talking, wasn't he?
Early, but one of the things we have in, in some of our trucks, like in my truck and Mike's truck and a couple of the other trucks, we actually have a thermometer. Now, it's not the thermometer that says you're going north, south, west, it actually has a laser beam that shoots the ground. So what it does is it gives us the temperature of the ground so that we know what the temperature of the ground is. If the ground is thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, it doesn't make sense to apply the salt, y'all loving it, y'all laughing. But we geek out on, so we get into it. So we know when we can put the salt down because at certain times when you put the salt down, it'll actually do a flash freeze. So, you know, you have to watch what the temperature is very closely, and if it's thirty-four and rising, we stop applying salt so that we're not wasting it. So handing it over, handing it over.
Whether or not to bring in the, the full plowing crew, probably the second worst decision as we made at that.
Commonest.
That's common, that's true. We can call them in and they're all there and nothing happens and.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that trivia.
We have a weather service, we get, I get up to date, Mike and I talk to the, to the meteorologists and they give us, you know, it's Gilman from ninety-five-nine, he gives us an update for the forecast of time there available twenty-four hours. So, yeah, we, we geek out in the snow, so sorry.
No, he's in there, he part of the same, so thank you.
Very on a plan, you know, certainly, obviously, they know that the lead rate.
We go by our weather forecast, so, so like tomorrow if it's gonna snow, we, we bring our guys in it too. So everybody be ready to melt up all the clouds, get all the trucks ready, you go off to work, it's a lot better than being reactive. We'd rather be proactive, have everybody here so we can address the town than coming into a place like, we need to be here right now and guys are driving from all over the place and it takes longer to get here, so we'd rather be better.
Everybody looks at the snow and thinks how pretty it looks and I just look, it's falling money, there's money falling out of the sky.
I still look at how. All right, moving to public rounds, I know you requested two folks there.
Yep.
That haven't heard. I appreciate that you went to tree for me in school, Mike, and any, any unrest or staff though as well? No, seriously, I think that's a great skill, it's something that I think a lot of us have noticed in the past that was needed, so thank you for.
One of the big things we did this year is we had this tree expert come up from Georgia who's world renowned, he used to work for Husqvarna and then he worked for Stil and he's a tree specialist. There were nine of us, I was one of them, we took a class and we went into where the tree plant's gonna go and we all cut down trees. We did the entire class with him and over the methodology, how to cut down a tree, what's the safest way to do it. And hard to graduate from this, you have to go and they pick a tree and you gotta go over and take it down the fell and, and drop it the right direction and everything else, so all our guys did that and he made a lot of, it was, it was a really good, really good class. You know, the guys all that might use a chainsaw.
They what?
They all that might use a chainsaw.
All right, well, thank you for attending that, we appreciate it and thank you for all the straining of all the fields and I see them out there early in the morning, you know, you maintain all the cemeteries and even straighten all the headstones and we, thanks for all the details. I don't think the town always realizes all the, all the, like, the public grounds folks do. So thank you.
Boy, you talk about the tree, we are through Maya, through our assurance, we have a lot of safety videos for different things. If you come here on a really rainy summer day, you'll find either the tree crew or the highway crew in here watching the safety videos, watching the, so we're doing a lot more training.
That's great.
Those departments, so.
We just purchased a bunch of new helmets, you know, it sounds crazy, but we ordered helmets that, you know.
It's not crazy.
Have scraps and, you know, the guys, I've been working on the guys to get them to wear the helmets. And, because we have a month-long safety meeting, we've all formed it. And they were like, no, no, we're not gonna wear them, it's gonna mess our hair up when I go to the pool, everybody, you know. But we were on that last storm.
Dent in their head.
We were on that last storm and there were more branches falling down on everybody's head, they're like, yeah, we, we need safety. It was actually really dangerous to have a guy down.
I go and went to demo with it when I fell off my shed, worked great. The background like this is not gonna get my head.
That's what it says to be, yeah.
I just like the same.
Any questions about public rounds, the budget, so again, we'll keep the few people requests as we kind of move.
So our, our thought in the future is we would love to be able to put two guys full-time on tree work and just go around trimming trees and clean tree workout. But remember, those two guys that we have. Um, but remember those two guys that we have are doing trash a lot of times in the summer and they, they could be doing something like tree work or fieldwork or something.
I think the first time in a while too, we're pretty close to fully staffed, I hope the bottom.
Yes, we are, we're fully staffed and highway and.
So a lot of my, uh, my blog.
It's a woman.
Uh, they've been fully staffed.
And we get, we get some good guys.
Right. Awesome, transfer station four hundred thirty-three in the back of the book, for the board. Yeah, you're a prize fund.
Uh, what can you say about the transfer? Everybody loves it, favorite place to go. And it's not the dump, it's transfer station. And I was trying to talk to this guy.
Keep going.
No, it's okay, you don't get paranoid.
That's all right.
Mike's dad loved it.
You guys. Who does?
I was talking about the dump every time he yelled.
Man, Thursday.
Transfer stations.
Well, we're almost fully staffed, um, this year. Uh, we added the extra employee last year, we've had a, a long workman's comp outage that hopefully is resolved soon. Um, and another employee out now. Um, so we're back to three designated, one borrow. Recyclables, uh, no longer have a rebate. Uh, I did manage to find a glass hauler that will take it for nothing if we can bring it down. We lost paying on that one. Uh, the rebate for cardboard no longer exists. Um, and the costs for the home industrial plastics and tin has risen as well from what it was last good as a new contract actually on freely the same. Off the state business for the contracting case now. Just reductions in the, in the budget this year. Um, our revenues are down. We do see a reduction in our C and D numbers, our construction and demolition debris. Um, we haven't been bringing in quite the volume we had before.
Is that the bulky waste line?
Yes, and the construction, uh.
C and D one also.
I, we probably have it as bulk, yeah.
Can we just raise?
Yes.
Everything, and, um, are we seeing that, are we seeing?
Uh, we just did that in December.
Okay.
Go ahead, I don't have. Well, there's no sense on that yet, but one.
So right now we're just protecting the, us to have a deficit of one hundred to one thousand dollars, just that might be what I think is. Yeah. But we're hoping that the way in which we raised all the fees will help clarify the.
And can face.
Just, you know, talking about playing, we kept, Kevin, Kevin kept, transfer station employees, a little late today. So they get everything packed, everything cleaned out, so that if we lose power tomorrow, we can still open the transfer station. We have room, because last time we were open, we lost power. Once it filled up, we had to close because we couldn't get back down. So they actually took steps today to be ready in case we lose power. So we'll, we'll see what happens, but. And I'll just warn, that's only temporary, I was kind of putting that in my back pocket in case we had more power out of this for three or four days. People like food to get rid of so that we could open it up. You take food, give it for your food, it's one. How is that we get two or three calls? Transfer station's closed, doesn't, doesn't call, when is it, when is the transfer station gonna open up, when's the transfer station?
Why not?
It's amazing.
Questions? Hi, John. Andrew? Eric?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Stuart? You have covered Stuart, Kevin?
Stuart.
Well.
Hope I can answer everything.
That's the most forte, is, is his favorite tape of the year. Sure, he was asking his sister to make a change of what he did. He asked me to zoom in and we told her.
All right, so he's also requesting. Well, it's not her.
Yep.
Um, and you've got his departmental request of four million seven hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty. Um, and the approved is four million four hundred forty-five eight thirty-three, which is in the clear sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven difference. Which, imagine it's mostly in staff. See what else? Electricity.
Staff, electricity, chemicals, um, Will, a lot of his, he's looking ahead, worst case scenario.
Okay.
One of the other challenges that he has is disposal of the script. Because the end product, one of the end products, a lot of the process, right? And it's getting harder and harder to dispose of it. Um, eventually we think they're gonna have to put a train and send it to Ohio or Indiana to get rid of it. It's, but it's expensive.
What line is that, Kevin?
Let me see.
On the.
Under rental foot, I believe.
Under rental?
Sean, help me out with that.
You're right.
Am I right? So, um. So that's one of the biggest challenges because we don't know where it's gonna go. We've been disposing of it in, uh, middle borough, what's on, we can try to get the best price as possible to get rid of it. But, uh, one won't take it and the other cost just keeps going up and up. So, um, the more noise they close the landfills, the less noise options we have to dispose of it. And the problem is, is a lot of what we get rid of, it's, it's a liquid material, you know, and balancing it, it's liquid red. But it's, it's not our salt, we can take more of the water out, but the energy cost is so much, it's not worth it to, to deal with. We have to do a tiny process and it'd be very energy, uh, energy, possibly, energy wise to, to get it to look better, a better. Try making a solution.
Check points for Kevin?
This doesn't, M K needs to go up a bit more than this. Was it the bond that was issued in December?
Because of what?
Yes, I'm sorry. Because of the bond that was issued in December, the amount we gave the ionized was higher than expected. So it probably needs sixty-eight thousand dollars of debt service that needs to be added to it to make the, it's like we're waiting for you to like six to eight.
Could anyone ask Julie about the ionized project public that is going?
I think it's going great, um. You know, real happy with it, we meet every two weeks with the engineering firm as well, I, I think they're up in our neighborhood.
Yeah, that is amazing of that.
And, um, no, they, they do a good job, uh, they clean line it and then they put the liners in. Um, it's a big effect, but it's, we're not gonna see the results probably for a year without rolling out. Won't be able to tell how well we did. We've identified some really, found some really problematic areas down East Beach Road. It's like a direct, there must be a direct pipe somewhere in the ocean. And we were trying to get that taken out and, uh, we're actually gonna have to dig that up. One of the problems we had is we had to move the water line because the water line was on top of it and that sewer line's fourteen feet deep. So we had to move the water line in order to get at the existing sewer line. And we're gonna put in some new manholes. Um, we're working with a contractor, we may do it in the winter, I just don't know if it's gonna be practical. Um, but it's a huge source of ionized, it's coming in there very well.
So you're looking at doing that this spring?
Well, we already moved the water line, he still has equipment out there and actually I spoke to him today and, um. They're gonna actually be out there tomorrow taking some shots with a level so that they can figure out what type of manholes they're gonna need. Because we, you have to figure out the exact elevation so you can block out the holes in them so that you can slide the pipe in. So that's a process there now. And probably in a week to two weeks, the manhole will be ready and then we have to make a decision. Do we wanna go for it, do we not, it's all gonna depend on what we're like at all this time. So.
Question?
Just a passive question, where are we right now? Because it's been pretty well.
We, I mean, we're up this year, but we've been, we've been improving the I I, we don't have that exact number with me right now. Um, unfortunately I did have it, but I didn't bring it with me. Um, we just turned in the paperwork to the state, um, maybe like two or three weeks ago. We're, we're down, we're doing good, but I, I can't give you the exact number.
Well, I'm just asking because it seems as though when we have a drought, the sewer, uh, capacity is better.
Without a doubt.
More rainwater.
Table than rainwater we have.
I go by the reservoir almost every day and it's, it's almost talking off. So I'm just curious as to if we were gonna get, get in trouble, would it be around now?
We're doing better than we were in the past because a couple of years ago we were, we had met, uh, we were over our eighty percent.
Right, right.
And we're not there right now, we're below.
And usage is down too this decade, so kind of.
Yeah.
Bounces out a little bit.
All right.
You know, I was talking to Jim, we talked about the reservoir and, um, I'm scratching my head saying, please, maybe we should pull a couple of woods. You know, let some of the water out with all this rain we're gonna get because we're, we're at a high capacity with that, so. Um, something I was gonna talk to.
We're very, pretty much overwhelmed.
Yeah.
With all the rain we've got.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Karen, anything?
No.
Thank you. Thanks Kevin.
You're welcome.
The cat, you're on.
He's very good.
Well, since it's your first time, they will allow you to go easy. All I have is seven people.
So. Well, I don't know if I'm doing a great job, they're, they're keeping everything together, I'm gonna get into a little bit of a water update later. Um, when we do the contract, Nancy yelled at me because it was thirteen pages long, she asked me to limit it to two, I think.
The updated contract? The update or the contract?
The update, with the contract, so I'll, I'll narrow that down and I'll, I'll, I'll be really quick with that, I promise, because Nancy's getting daggie's right now. But, uh, no, the water department is, is doing great, we're looking at a lot of different things and, and they're juggling a lot of different, uh. Different things that a typical plant or operator wouldn't. Uh, there was a request for, uh, additional employees. Um, one of the things, the biggest challenge we've had is we're only down one person right now, which is an operator. Actually, yes, we used somebody recently to, you know, we might be scanning from another town. Um, but the biggest problem is the time it takes to get an operator trained. So if, if I hired somebody right now today and started from scratch, it'd take three years. Until they're in a position that we can use them. And that doesn't mean they can run the plant by themselves, that's just that they can be, you know, they can be trusted and do basic things.
An operation that takes a few years.
Right. So it's, it's on and on with the licenses and they've made it more and more difficult to, to do, so it's, uh, it's frustrating. So, um, I think we had technical services, we got a reduction in technical services, but we boosted it last year to do some additional work. For the treatment plant, I believe. Um, the binding and printing went down by five, that's because we hadn't spent it the year before. And then we had five thousand dollars that was defined printed by my company, I don't remember what that was. And we also had a reduction in our fuels and lubricants and that's because we didn't use our line of bucket.
And it looks like Nancy, you and Jim, put that more, increased the deadline as well as protected the emergency server.
Uh, and just on your things to think about, with the water rebate program you were still allowed, it was increased by Jim to thirty-five thousand. I don't know if you may wanna revisit that, there is some money in debt service to pay down debt. Um, so we could move some of it up if you wanted to augment that, uh, on and here on.
Where are we with that now? We're at the.
Put their head.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right. I should.
Almost out of mine.
We're, we're close, out of mine.
Almost out of mine.
Oh, good, good. That's like the one place I want to be having money.
Yeah.
And we're off with the Dolan well.
We're out with the Dolan well?
Yeah. Would you like to do the update?
No, 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 I, 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 that's one of the things I pulled because I had too much to say about the Dolan well.
Okay.
Um, we are, we are there with the Dolan well, we're ready to go out and do testing, but the cost is going up significantly. That was one of the projects, it was originally supposed to be about three million, it's up to nine million. Uh, the reason because we, there was some PFAS encountered down there and we would have to do additional treatment for that. So that's, that's something on the shelf that's kind of ready to go. But, um, the cost has gone up three times what it was originally estimated cost and then we've got to do treatment.
Just because of the PFAS treatment?
Because of the PFAS treatment and everything else, yes.
Cost going up too, cost of pipes gone.
So in the whole, in the whole piece in, like, the, uh. Presence of PFAS, are we seeing like the D E P of the state providing any grants in order to address that?
State has some money, but it's not a lot. Very small amounts. The, the cat, so something I mean, it's twenty pots per, right now trillion.
Trillion.
And it's going to, we think, four pots per trillion. Which is like two grains of sand on Benny Beach, right? So the treatment levels are. Indecible at this point. When you do the testing. If you put your glove on, Rob, you can get a bad test.
Yeah, it's an everything.
So, um. The title of the conversation with the Dolan well field is how far away is it? We're gonna have PFAS testing in a lot of treatment plant, what would the cost, up it back here to go to the treatment plant? Uh, it's costing you treatment on site. You know, I think, I think this summer when we get a couple of minutes break, we have to sit down and Kevin's putting everything together. We have the Dolan well field, we have the reservoir project. Right, we can't afford to do both of them, we have Hummer Rock and Waterman. We've actually asked Plymouth County for money for a lot of these things, where the opera funds are like. Sometimes I'm gonna spend all that money, we have projects ready to go, we can spend the money tomorrow. But we just, we're not gonna have the ability to do all these projects because people won't be able to afford it. So we'll have to look and say, okay, if we do Dolan, it's gonna cost this much, it's gonna give us this much water, we do the reservoir. It costs this much, it's gonna give us this much water, this is gonna give us this, and we have to prioritize and then go forward. Uh, PFAS was a, was a big thing.
Yeah, so that's why with the new treatment plant, we set it up so you could treat additional water via PFAS. So the two wells, we've got a couple of wells, um, one's right off Brie, the other one's at the end of, um. That, I'm not. And we're gonna try to incorporate those in so that we can run them through the treatment plant. So when it does get down to pots per quadruple, you know, whatever it is, you know, we, we can, we treat it with the greatest technologies available.
Okay. Any questions? Karen, we have a water update coming up.
I had to come back, but I'll talk about anything.
On the budget? Um, are you thinking on the budget?
I just, I know I've seen it and I just can't figure out where it is. Nancy, fifty percent of the, the water budget is to pay for that service, the investment that we're just making costs. Do we have, do you have the, the water debt? I know it, I know I've seen it, I know you have it, um, the retirement chart.
Yeah, it's in the capital plan.
It's in, I'm like, I know I saw it.
Yeah, that's where we saw it.
All right, if there are no questions, thank you. Thank you all for all your work, dedication to town, you know. What you do is, you definitely need more staff, so whenever you can do the show, get some additional funding, uh, you take.
I talked to someone once and they said, what is the D P W using? Saw you do this morning, get up, take a shower, go to work, it's D P W. Use it every day, you're under the bill.
You thank you all.
Definitely, Mike, William.
I'd make sure you know.
Stay safe the next, uh, twenty-four hours. We'll go see. Kind of over you.
Oh, you can say Robert's garbage. Wow, I didn't get that.
Good night, oh, goodbye.
Yeah, we'll get it to you. So next on the list, we do, we do a pretty exciting contracts. Or.
Yep, so the first one is a contract with Energy Conservation for the wastewater new line efficiency screw. For ninety thousand dollars. Yep, so the first one is a contract with Energy Conservation for the wastewater new high efficiency screw blower for ninety thousand dollars.
So this is a grant that, um, Will had gone after, and, um, I believe we have a twenty thousand dollar match, but it gives us a much more efficient, um, screw blower. And I'm not even sure where it goes, but. I apologize about that, I think it's in the indicative, let me look at it.
Yep, it provides oxygen, activated sludge process.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep, uh, furniture stall, the screw compressor, lower furniture stall. So not only are we getting, um, savings on our revenue in the state's bank, but we're also updating some agents. Thanks.
Your motion? Move to approval September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three contract with Energy Conservation Inc. for town situate wastewater, new high efficiency screw blower motor for amount of ninety thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Eep, I Karen, following?
Second.
Second by Andrew Goodrich, on favor.
Excellent, thank you.
So the next one on my agenda, maybe yours, also is to amend the contract, um, for pre-qualification bidding services for a treatment plant for water incurrence, I thought this was interesting, so you can kindly, where they're asking us to change here?
No, it's not a change at all, we only awarded the contracting sections, as you recall. So when we said we went to the next phase, for the pre-qualification for the contractor, as well as bidding services, we'd come back before the slide, the slide forward and explain what's going on and what we're, what we're doing, um, and we figured that'd be the, the best course of action. So right now, uh, I can give you a little water update, and it'll include an update for the treatment plant and everything else. If you'd like, it's very exciting. Want to back out music, Rob?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so Sterns Meadows, um, we're, we're reaching some of our design milestones. Uh, state permits, we've got our mass D O T permit for access, um, it's seventy-five to a hundred percent, it was submitted in twelve-seven. Uh, mass D E P, we submitted the new technology approval for a satellite A, then that was issued in twelve thirteen point three. Mass D E P water treatment systems modification, B R P W S twenty-four, it's been approved in twelve fifteen. So we have all our state permits, um, they've gone through the zoning court of deals, that was approved. The building's four foot higher, uh, than in that, they, they approved it twelve fourteen. We went to the planning board, uh, permit decision was filed on twelve nineteen, we're awaiting that. Uh, we went to the water health, they had a buy permit that was issued twelve twenty-six, twenty-three. Uh, conservation commission order conditions was approved at the one-two-twenty-four meeting, um, and we're just waiting on the, uh, order conditions for that. Um, design process and our schedule, our pre-qualification R F P package, uh, town is reviewing it now, we're reviewing it for moving current. Um, we also have a pre-qualification R F P that's gonna be going up January tenth. So what we're doing is all, you have to be D T M certified to build this type of building, so D T M's another state agency, you have to meet the certain criteria in order to work on a water treatment plant. So there's only a limited amount of contractors, you can't just say, I'm gonna build a water treatment plant without being D T M certified, and have all certifications right now. So what we're putting out is a pre-qualification package, pre-qualified people to bid on the project, they have to meet certain criteria before we allow them to do it. So that's ongoing now. What we're going to do is the R F Ps are gonna be due January thirty-first. We're gonna review for the month of February, um, there's many contractors, because you also have filed subcontractors, you could file subcontractors for mason or plumbing, electric. We'll be going through all those, all those packages once we receive them, and we'll get that taken care of in February. Um, the design package is expected to be ninety percent and have the full final inspection by, um, mid-March, early March. Um, we're hoping to have the bid documents completed by April twenty-fourth, and then we will have a bid open in May twenty-fourth, so that we can get the project going. Um, we're expecting construction to start June of twenty twenty-four, and we're hoping for an end date of November twenty twenty-sixth. So that's ongoing. Other things that have been occurring with, with incurrence that they've been helping us out with, they've put some documentation for us for, uh, one of the manganese contacters, as you know, we have one manganese contactor in the treatment plant now. We're looking to, um, order manganese contactors so that we can set them up and use them in the existing plant while the plant's being constructed to help eliminate some of our, uh, some of our manganese. We're also looking at an aeration system. Right now, as you notice, we've got one well that works sometimes, and one that doesn't work, it, you know, it works sometimes, it doesn't work. We actually have two of them, they clog up, cat goes out, no more, robo bags it a couple of times, pulls out some, some.
I pull thousands of pounds of slime out of that.
Lily pads. Lily pads, whatever, and, and we, we clean it up because it clogs up the area. So what we're looking at to get a more robust system, as the engineers reviewed the pond, they thought we could get a lot better water quality if we added additional diffusers, now we're not gonna have, it's, it's not gonna be giant water spouts everywhere in there that we're gonna light up and people come marveling to look at, but if it all looked like a fish tank, it'll be bubbles coming up everywhere in different sections of the tank. That could potentially improve our water quality significantly as it comes out of that pond. So that's one of the other things we're looking at doing. Um, and we're also looking for other options of what we can do to improve our water quality. So that's been ongoing, and that's the update for the plant, if there's any questions for the plant, or, or if I spoke a little too quickly, you know, please tell me.
The water line project is substantially finished at this point, the water line from old open bucket to this side of the new plant that is substantially finished.
Okay, so the eighty-two thousand is for water incurrence and put it, put out this, basically paying them to put out the bid.
Putting up the bid, does he award, do all the investigation?
They did add some dollars in there for public outreach, I saw too, to top that off.
Yep.
Okay.
But it's not over, right? We're not over.
No, this is part of the, this is part of what the original contract was.
Okay.
It, it was broken down into phases, and, um, we didn't award the entire contract all at once. At the time the board had said, they requested we come back in for a couple of, you know, issues and. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other update, I was gonna give some information on well seventeen, um, which is, uh, tech factory pond road, do, or do you want questions?
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Sure. Thanks, and thank you. Remind me at, at what junctures in the project do, I assume, we would, we would incur in our doing revised cost estimates as they learn things, like, there must be.
This phase.
One.
This phase, where they're doing, they're doing estimates, um, now, and as they get further and further in the constructability, they will refine. Yes. So their estimates, and, and we're, we're right there right now, right around the fifty, but they're, you know, they're taking into a lot of different considerations, um, you know, where we are for, um, materials, you know, materials have escalated since we, since we did this project, Nancy, Eric told me she'll kill me if we go over, but, uh, we're doing everything we can to minimize the costs and, and, and keep everything down on the project.
Look, that's exactly.
Yeah, no, it is, and, and that's something we've been very cognizant of. Um, you know, Cat's knocking out a window in her office, uh, we took that out, uh, you know, we're doing everything we can to, to, to keep it, you know, keep it tight.
And the only other thing that I wanted about the contract that, you know, we added the money for comms and outreach, and that's very important to the board, but simultaneously we've also added an internal comms person. So there an opportunity there that we could, um, you know, download some of that to Kathy, or is it not a good idea? Or is it not? Why do the board and current usually has to prepare all the contacts, they still have to do this, they still.
I mean, a lot of the public outreach we did was around the site. And why we could do that site, what that site was for, that's mostly done. When we had to, yeah, have a second vote at the site, so that was a lot of that public outreach then, where we're gonna come and did all the mailing to the neighbors, got all the meeting with the neighbors, uh, did all that stuff, so that's mostly finished. So we'll be offloading a lot of that, it's not a lot to offload at this point to Kathy.
Yeah.
We'll be offloading that to Kathy, to the upwards of something, but most of the public outreach was around the sighting and the site and dealing with the old force.
Uh, so then, but Karen, but, so you kind of answered that, I mean, they just increased it to get to that top number, right, that's seventy-five thousand? So are you saying we don't need it?
No, we're still gonna do some outreach, and they actually did a lot more outreach than, they kind of went over what they were supposed to do, they did a lot of outreach. But, um, still work with Kathy, Kathy put a lot of the stuff out.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll still leave them to kind of put it into layman's language, then we'll have Kathy.
Got it, that's great, thank you. Anything else with regards to this topic?
Yeah.
Alright, well seventeen.
Well seventeen, okay, um, one of the issues.
This is the one on by tech factory, right?
Exactly, exactly. Um, as you were, it's a new treatment facility, the well was added to treat manganese. Uh, as this well was on, we started having some issues with discolored water and all working by the load, which is not typical. Um, at least not in the past. So we had a challenge, we were trying to figure out what it is. Is it the chemistry of the water coming from the plant mixing with the new well? Is it the water chemistry changing of the quality of water that we're getting from the well? So we've been looking at that. We weren't exactly sure what it was, so, uh, we had issues with it, and we were trying to figure out what it was, so in September, we shut that well off. And what we did is we brought the engineers into investigation. So what we've done for that, we lowered our chlorine dose, um, and we've been able to lower that, we've switched some of the ways um, that we're treating the water, and we're treating it differently. Uh, the dose at the time of testing was one point two milligrams per liter, we were able to lower to point eight. Chlorine dose. We are further decreasing our THMs, which is our, um, byproducts from the chlorine, um, we're working with the operators to.
You know, we put these products on the app by switching treatment techniques?
Have we seen any impact yet?
So we have been running it through the system.
We don't, we're not running.
We're not running it through the system.
Running to waste. So yes, we've been continually sampling and getting good results.
So, uh, we've been working, uh, in the aeration pilot study, uh, to determine, um, if we could modify, make modifications in the finished water tank. And we're also looking, um, we've been working with the engineers to, uh, assist the water department in total manacarbon. Um, we obtained a five gallon finished water sample that we sent to a specialized laboratory to conduct rapid small scale column tests, which is not R S S C T, to determine the effectiveness of granulated activated carbon. Um, one of the things we're looking at is potentially adding some, uh, granulated activated carbon on GAC to that system to help control any color or ring issues we have with that. We have been talking with the engineers, we're not a hundred percent sure if the issue we were having at that well are the byproducts of that well, could have been due to the high groundwater table, it might have influenced the aquifer. So we're looking at a couple of different things.
We determined also, um, starting our project that the source water quality has greatly changed in, uh, in content, so that's something we've been trying to contribute that we felt with.
That's interesting, I mean, there's, it's not any new development where we're in that area.
No, but that aquifer, no well lovely also sucks off that same aquifer, they've got a well out of that aquifer. And I was talking to, um, one of their people recently, and he was saying how they noticed changes also, they were having problems with that same aquifer.
So is that, is the new old open bucket, um, developed, gonna feed off of that as well?
It feeds off the general system.
Well, it's in that same.
Area.
General area, so is that gonna also impact?
Well, we're hoping to have everything square away before that. We've got the water in decent shape right now.
It's the engineers that are, um, working with you on this.
Time law. And they were, they're the original designers, um, so we brought them back in to figure out what's going on. Um, and they've been very helpful, um, you know, they could have said, you know, your water quality's changed, but they've been working with us. Um, one of the things that we have done is we switched the oxidizing agent to a hypochlorite, um, from the hypochlorite.
To permanginate.
Permanginate, so that's why.
You're killing Cat, you know, you're just killing.
I know, I know, that's why half of Cat's clothes are purple, because she's filled with permanginate on it, so I should know that, I did, she was complaining earlier about it. So, uh, we have been making a lot of, uh, a lot of improvements to that well, uh, because we will be using that well when we have to shut the plant down in February, because we're gonna change out the activated carbon in the treatment plant. But we'll, we'll figure out how we're gonna do it, we're gonna kind of time it.
Yeah, so we're confident that we're gonna be putting the line online, quality wire that meets D E P standards. We, we are, we do need these standards now, so by the time we put that online, we expect to have some more answers that, that are the, uh, the experiments that we're doing with the engineers.
How far advanced will you bring it online prior to, uh, to switching your withholding?
Well, it's sort of online, it's sort of online now, we're watching the, the finished product, we're keeping an eye on it.
Oh, I thought you said it wasn't.
It's, if we're.
It's not going into the system, it's going to waste.
Yeah, if we're.
Oh.
So we're running the plant, but it's not a water system.
So bottom line, water, that water's safe. Everyone here's confident, will be used at some point, it'll add at some point.
If, if, if there's an emergency at any point, you can, I'm confident that will go online, it will meet D E P standards.
Susan, any questions? Were you done? Sorry.
No, but it's okay, I was on it all.
Any questions in this junction? Did, did we, did we vote to amend the contract? I have checked up.
Oh, no, I was, I was going to the water, I was gonna do the water.
He's really worried. No, we're going back, we have, okay, I'm confused.
I had to trim it down to three pages, Nancy wouldn't let me go over the fifty, I got.
Uh, anything else? No, I think the well seventeen's important, that's the kind of, yeah.
Yep.
Is that it?
Um, the only other thing I was gonna bring up.
I'm not saying it to be rude, I just don't think it's.
I, I could go on and on, but Nancy will kill me. Um, we, we do have a, another, we have another, um, warning letter coming out, I'll let Cat explain, explain that. Um, same as we had last year with the T T H Ms, um, and, you know, that would be coming up.
Yeah, this is the disinfection by products, so unfortunately for their surface water quality, it's so glorious. Unusual for it to be resurfaced in winter, usually.
Because of all the rain.
Because of all the rain, you just have so much water, maybe through the aquifer that it just, it, the manganese levels are lower, but are, or the next are very high, and it's got very high colors, so it's been difficult to treat, so. Our disinfection by products are, uh, we have a max containment level for December. And it's pretty common, the E P said it's very common through a lot of the other towns, just because everyone's had those in front of water. Hopefully, the well seventeen coming back online will be looking on the treatment plant less. But again, um, the new treatment plant will have the capability, removing not only the organics, but the D T H Ms.
So are other towns having to send out some of those?
Yes. The E P said a lot of people had to do this year.
And is this temporary?
We did it last year also, we had the same, we did the same.
It was the same thing.
Yeah, a little time to the summer when the water quality.
Sometimes, obviously sometimes.
So this goes in the mail? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, we booked it online, I assume. And this is going out tomorrow? Public noise is going out tomorrow, or?
I think it's going on.
Yeah.
It was one at twelve.
Yeah, at twelve.
Okay.
Sorry. They're gonna be able to make the on bigger and freshen kind of stand up? That would be.
We could try, that's, that's a template that's put together by the D E P, we have to follow it, and we just add the like, we plug in the dates and the location and everything else, so.
You can't find a question, so. Okay.
Um, the only other thing I had in my, in my water update is that we are pushing. Um, the only other thing I had in my, in my water update is that we are pushing pretty hard because. Uh, the power Sharon has a new water treatment plant that's going up to bid around the same time, we're trying to get ahead of them. That's a thirty million dollar plant, as well as Springfield has a very large addition going into their system. Uh, which is, I think it's like eighty million, so we're trying to be the first one down the block, so we get more interest in price. So that's, that's why a lot of the damage.
Okay.
So that was my, my little update and.
Well, thank you for that.
You can go.
Um, okay, great, any questions? We have one already, you sort of asked her.
So we've spent.
I wanted to know on the, the spend.
We've spent twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Just spent nineteen in Jan.
Spending what?
Out of twenty-five on the rebate program.
Oh, okay.
So what we do, our special town meeting reconciliations, we will perform by end.
We watch it at thirty-five, it's twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Thirty-five and this is twenty.
This is next year. Okay, good. Um, do I have a motion for amending the initial contract?
Select for amendment, original contract, provide through qualification, bidding services and award for new water treatment facilities, living and current for total sum not to exceed eighty-two thousand five hundred.
Moved by Andrew Goodrich, that then seconded by Karen Canfield on favor.
Aye.
No, thank you for that detail, it's logical, together, it's good to hear, it's good for the public to hear. I have no idea about what's on team, so that is good to hear, I'm sure you will hear about it. Thank you, yeah, thank you for the work to rep the fire.
Kat, I'm doing, I'm working on that, like I said, half her clothes are purple, not by choice, because, because when you get those chemicals on there, it doesn't do a lot.
You sweat your.
What do you say to the, the wearables of the law? Oh, yeah. Let's see, what's next? Uh, transfer station capital paper recycling contract?
And I'm going to recover and hand this over.
What's going to happen?
I'm going to hand this fellow, Sean, to claim this one, because I'll, I'll have to recover after all that talking.
Yeah, there, there, I didn't include a lot of information on the executive action contract. This contract that we've been using for the last several years. They provide us, not only the compacted containers, the hauling transportation to dispose of. There's a, about a twenty-five to thirty percent increase on some of the recyclable items this year, which. Would equate to about a hundred dollars. Container increase every time. The co-mingles average around five tons in the compactor. They average that new increase. That new container to dispose of will be about a hundred dollars a trip now, additionally to this new contract. I did bump up the not to exceed amount based on estimates and tonnage that we've calculated over the past years, that's all.
Is this a one-year contract, Sean?
No, well, it would be for the single with the option.
Ignore, I think no extension line would be.
So I should have just, so.
I think it expired.
I'll see you next year.
I think it's written, written on June thirty.
So say that again, so we don't rely on that.
As I recall, it, it's written to expire on June thirty. So seeing a couple of months.
I like that.
So this is only for six months?
Can you add it now?
Yeah, we haven't made a motion yet.
You haven't made a motion, could you add it?
Right, but it's signed by the contractor, I don't know if the whole of the rest beyond that.
Of course, something that is volatile, right there.
But it, it does say it's a, it's a vote. It, each party has to be agreeable to, to extend it to.
I think it, I think it says in the contract, price is subject to change to thirty days notice. So I think if, if you would want to take a vote that's contingent, having a running year and as long as it's contingent on the contractor or break. Which I don't know why he would object if he has thirty days to change his contract.
Does the N B C eighty-six contract expire on June thirtieth, is that why, this state contract?
No.
Yeah.
It should.
Right.
Okay, so. What are we paying last year? What's the increase? You say not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, so what were we, do we have an idea?
I think the cap was around seventy.
Amplely.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Now, kind of about seventeen different vendors, all the stuff we paid from there.
And this is all taken into account, local rates that we also address.
And F A C fifty-six was updated eleven-three, did you go with?
When?
Eleven-three-twenty-three, so just in November.
Oh, seems. Okay. Anything else you want to ask, and we should probably amend this for.
What to? Need to the full water contract for one year to capital paper recycling, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars contingent on vendor. In, agreeing to the extension of one year.
Okay.
Almost.
Paul, you want to move it? You got that?
Move that the select board worked the contract for one year. Contingent on capital paper recycling for pickup and processing recyclable materials since we're transfer station. For amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry. Moved by Andrew Goodrich, seconded by Karen Canfield on favor.
Thank you, sorry, I made it confusing.
No worries. Um, then we have engineer, design and plan for Turner Road, Lighthouse, healthy house, looks there tonight.
That was helpful, they have an audience.
Well, we usually come, so it's raining, so let's, let them know what's happening, which is great news.
So on this project, we've been, we went out, I believe we sent it sixteen firms who received four proposals. Um, in the end, we went around and around because we were looking at cost, cost between B Z A, which is our highest rated. Fox was our second highest rated, and we looked at the costs of what cost to design both projects. We're comfortable with Fox, because they're doing the next section of sea wall, we think it's kind of a no brainer in a way that they continue to work down. And their cost is cheaper than B Z A.
So you're, we're working with them today?
We're working with them now on the Ocean Side Turner Sea Wall now. So it's just kind of a continuation of the work that they've already started.
Because we have been happy with G Z A in the past, right?
Well, they did the stairs over in mine.
Okay.
You know, no, I, I mean, G Z A, G Z A's been doing a good job, they do a great job also, so both companies did a great job. We were looking kind of at the cost because Fox was cheaper than, than B Z A.
To look at the reviews on the receipt of four proposals that are listed.
So let's just cover the timing a little bit, you know, what do we anticipate, so once we award this, what are we looking at in regards to implementation?
You know, the, the big question mark is permitting, hold on, what are you going to think? Because we've been dealing with turner, Ocean Side Drive now, where we were ready to book the bid. This January, February, but not by C Z M and the permitting, so permitting's a big question mark.
So didn't Senator O'Connor address that with C Z M? Jen?
We've got nothing back to move it.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. Might have been a little too pointed, we spoke to her, also tried to speak to Lieutenant Governor, but we haven't called that.
And do we have a plan within this for the emergency repair plan, is that part of the bid?
That was part of the, the documents. Documents that we put together for them to take a look at, excuse me.
Okay.
All right, I'll take a couple.
Questions for Kevin or Sean about this?
No, I'm, it's about the G Z A and the rating, so.
Karen?
Yes, so this is covering the sea wall that goes from Situate Avenue, separate, down to.
It's thirteen hundred feet on the edge right here, so I, where the opening is. Where the opening is?
So just, there are, there are two openings. There's a weird opening.
So the second opening was.
It's like a maze.
With the old, real, since what it needs to be?
Yeah.
So I think that's the opening and then it goes towards the lighthouse.
And then, and then there are two other openings, right?
There are.
The boat, why? Was there a?
Yeah.
There's an opening and then it ends that other opening, because last time we spoke to the resident that lived there, they did not want to give us easy to do the section of sea wall. And that's one of the worst sections of sea wall that's there, because they.
Well, that's one they keep taking pictures of and showing us, telling us. Um, so will this include, I, I assume we're talking design engineering here, but are they going to take into account the beach access that currently exists?
Would maintain those.
Yeah.
Would maintain those, if anything, what we've done in the path is we've actually widened them up a little bit in some areas so that we could get equipment in and out.
Right.
So it would be big enough so that we could, um, the one further down northerly on Ocean Side Drive, we've got wooden tie gates in there to stop it further with that. But we wind it up so we can very quick on the beach.
And just for a plus clarification, it's not only design and engineering, but also construction?
No.
Well, it's a task by construction services.
So that they would oversee for construction services, that might be looking at bits and bittles, they're going to say, we're going to use this type of, create this type of rebar. And then we review that, see if it was acceptable.
Okay, so based on what we're seeing for construction cost down, just down the road, it's how much per foot we might be.
We were looking at like eight thousand dollars a couple of years ago, but we don't know because we haven't, we haven't bid these in a little while and mailed up because of the partners. So we have been looking for the bid basis. Could be as nice as well, we don't know.
Yeah, you know.
Good.
Good, great, Karen, Kathy, anything? All right, do I have a motion?
Move that select board of work contract, engineer design and permitting services, sea wall repair, replacement for Turner, whatever, Lighthouse Road to Fox Engineering. Four hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred dollars.
Moved by Andrew Goodrich, that then seconded by Susan Harrison, follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that, thank you for expediting that.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that, and we have Turner Road friends or listeners, they can see that we are with this law, just great. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a great night.
Thank you, you too, stay safe.
You too. Like the news public, let's be serious, say, I mean, they're permitted being on a park and water. So may I say you have a.
If you're.
Walk in. So you're just, we're an hour behind, okay.
Yeah.
We are, we're like that. Well, we'll all spend. All right, so the agriculture revolving fund.
I, I'm on the roll.
Aquaculture. Aquaculture, isn't that what I said?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Aquaculture or an island accent, I immediately.
I stand corrected, sorry, I don't, I don't have a voice either, I don't know why.
But there's, several proposed annual town meeting article relevant to amendments to the general bylaws. This first one is to general bylaw one oh two six oh, revolving fund bylaw. Um, it's to augment the existing aquaculture revolving fund so that could also take any funds that were. Are mitigation imposed by the conservation commission for docks and other structures and put it into this fund. So then that the, whatever mitigation was required to be could be done, so this could be reseeding. This could be hanging a marsh grass, whatever it was that the mitigation was to restore. So right now, there is no mechanism for that, and it's in their regulations that they charge, but there's no place to put, to mine.
Well, no, have they charged in that?
Um, I believe so, yes.
They did, but they can't. Because the charge was, when you get your permit, you give us a check.
Oh, oh, no, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I, we were talking about conservation commission, the docks and.
This is the conservation commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's not tied to anything. And so marsh fields is, you build a dock, you are going over into tidal zone, and if the tidal zone is habitat for shellfish. Therefore, based on this formula, the size of your dock, you will give us X amount of dollars that go into this fund for shellfish.
To take care of.
Okay, ours was, you get your dock permit, you give a check to the conservation commission.
Why do they do this?
Well, that's the whole thing, you can't, there's no cause of effect.
It goes, it goes into the general fund.
It will go to the conservation fund, but you can't charge for that. You can't just say permit money, there has to be, this is what you're doing, this is why you have to pay us. And the money is going into a fund that would repair or fix, whatever it is that you're having an impact on.
Fix, remember, fix. Not tracking that.
Whereas what they were doing didn't have any causal ties, they, they couldn't do it, that's why they have to do it this way.
Is this in time to get ever tossed over dock money?
No.
Because that would have been a mitigation, like if that was in marsh field, it would have gotten a lot of money.
They would get, I mean, our, our was, was way more than what marsh field gets. But I actually got a call, it's probably my fault, I got a call from resident who asked about it, I looked into it, I'm like, can't do it, can't do it the way you do it. There's no cause of effect, we do it, you don't have a fund to do it right now. So.
All right, so this article will address that.
Correct, yes.
Right, so I don't think we need any, we don't need any votes, this is going to go, right.
And then later on, you have a side that you want to kick anything on, or I don't know.
Right. So this, okay, any additional questions?
I do have one question.
Okay.
For the purposes and expenditures, do you have to say specifically for reseeding?
No, it can, um, because it could be to, are we trying to tie it to the aquaculture?
I'm just saying, no, I'm saying they would also, you would probably also want to do reseeding, you know, like the projects they did in marsh field, although, right.
Well, that's just aquaculture activities, so I think, isn't that broad enough to cover that?
I think, and that was, that was kind of the point, that's what they want to do.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
So I.
So you're okay keeping that, so?
Yeah. If it'll cover it, reseeding.
Okay. All right, general bylaw thirty-one fifty.
Okay, so the board took a vote back in July after testimony from the commissioner of disabilities and the traffic rules committee. That the handicap parking fee should be increased from one hundred dollars to three hundred dollars, but surprise, surprise, it's also on the general bylaws. So now we need to get the general bylaws to agree to what everybody else said was a good idea. Uh, so this article would be to amend the one hundred dollar line in this section of the general bylaws to three hundred dollars.
Great, thank you for that.
The things you find when you go surfing in the general bylaws.
Well, that bylaw, maybe of ours, I know, we'll get to that. Okay, and then the amend general bylaw thirty-one twenty-five.
So the overnight recreational particular cracking public property bylaw, which was not approved by the attorney general on its first attempt. On the second attempt, it was approved by the attorney general, but the attorney general asked that specific amendments be made. Just to make sure that it was very clear, that unhoused visual would not be impacted by the bylaw. So I have sent all the information from the attorney general and the existing bylaw over to Newtown council. Asked them for better wordsmithing than I have under draft warrant, and I'm just waiting for them to bring it back with the evidence that they had. Yeah, so this is basically housekeeping required by the attorney general office, just to make sure that that bylaw is appropriate.
Thank you. I was saying, this has gotten so far peeled from the original, you just don't, can't put your camper on Cold Parkway and your, your sun deck and your, this.
Side of the queue.
It's, it's on the way to, where. By definition, if these people have these campers, they're not unhoused. So, I, I'm just saying, it's gotten a little crazy, but.
That's right, we'll take care of it, we just, happy. Just want to make sure that nobody gets, is disadvantaged by the, shouldn't be.
Yeah. Did it work?
Yeah, we've been, yeah, I was saying you can't, on this one, so.
Okay. Not funny.
Yeah.
That's what I really, I think it was one there a couple of weeks ago.
Over ninety with the suns and the, all the accoutrements that went with the.
Put them up for.
Interesting.
All right, guys, thanks for doing that.
Um, so, uh, it, it's just all about what we, what the next gap hour.
Okay.
Um, so the next one is Laura, your, um, placeholder for a second round of the small grant repair program for the affordable housing trust. Um, you have a summary, um, that Sherry provided to me of the grant requests that have been received and what is to pay to date and of course, these still have a deadline of twelve thirty-one first at metals, there's, that's doubled much since then. Um, so it's whether or not, um, Laura, I don't know, if this is still something you wanted to do, affordable housing is on board or where we stand on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think a horrible house, so this is the small grants program to residents who are not necessarily, who do not necessarily qualify through, um, money through affordable housing trust, so we need to take it from the general fund. Um, it was, we, there was great demand for them to came through, um, the committee, as you can see, I think this is the center of the year, right, it's just the might in the middle is not live. So did you say there's a printout from Sherry?
Yes, um, yes, it was, uh, it should be in your packet, it was right after we sent your action request, and they were, um, it showed the applicants and there were twenty applications, but they were eight approved.
Yeah, I mean, they were pretty rigorous, but there is balance left right now, um, but, um, we would probably, the committee would probably want to list another round, obviously, after, um, I mean, in a new fiscal year. Um, so it's just whether the board wants to continue to, well, twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, general fund would continue to support this, um, like I said, there is, there is need out there. So can we roll the money over?
Yes, it doesn't, it doesn't close out, but the application is amount twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven of the first twenty-five thousand.
Wow. And they're typically smaller grants, it's like three thousand, three, five hundred.
I think they're capped at the point.
Yeah.
And this would, um, previously it came from pre cash, so it didn't impact the budget because it's not in the budget line.
Where would you take it from this?
Pre cash.
So that was all just, you know, discussion if you're, you're willing to keep that, um, on the warrant, yeah. Next.
And the next one before you is the capital planning that, um, Karen and Chris Karsha from the capital planning committee presented to you and exclusive of the Havilah Cushing, um, school project, which hasn't come before any board committee yet, it's still in the school building committee, my capital planning recommended by Dan, they're both counts, the town administrators are the money plan. So this now been devoted to advisory committee and chairman Karsha is presenting for them on Thursday, so, um, I also need the select board to tell me what your recommendations are for the capital plans.
Did anybody have any issues with, um, what Chris presented in the last meeting? Anything that they wanna challenge and delete?
Their glasses are too strong for me. Thought their review was very thorough.
Sorry, and I retired those stronger ones. I'm sorry, what Karen?
Thought that, I thought their review was very thorough and they argued that, that this team did a great job and that, I appreciate what they're putting in together and they're revealing, they're in good shape.
Just not, I'm just appreciating, for anyone that's so expensive.
There will be a trial and error, Sam.
What I've been, the whole freight.
Wish we could just ship it up to Laura's situation.
Nope. That would be nice. Susan, any comments or concerns?
I didn't have any.
So then, um, Nancy is asking us to vote in support of this, so, um, she does go in front of advisory on, um, Thursday, that she can convey that, um, this plan has support.
Motion.
Yes, please.
Move that select board move forward, the F L I twenty twenty-five capital plan as recommended by the capital plan committee for thirty-three projects totally, twenty-eight million, one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars funded by cash, container, and it's branched, all the funds and borrowing.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second, second by Karen Connelly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Thank you. So then next is just to go through the warrant, correct?
Yes. And to read your agenda item that is part of.
Yes.
What am I supposed to do?
Just read your agenda item. If you read it literally, it's very funny.
Um, to discuss and vote.
Strike Nancy.
Uh, annual town meeting, special town meeting, uh, warrants for any articles, strike me as a hold.
Our finance, our finance director. All right, we're not gonna strike.
No.
It, it was good for a laugh at this time, Eddie.
Maybe it's early.
What did, what did we do? Meaning any articles to strike for no warrant. Just a guy, who did notice, I call her the wizard, I'm a wizard.
So, just for clarity, we're looking just to approve or disapprove the actual, um, articles, but not to vote to actually approve or disapprove.
Yeah, reparations for next week, this is just, you're completely for it and the two more, and this is not included, that's the halfway school warrant, that it's closed, which is the one article, but we don't have any language for you to look at.
Okay.
All of these warrants were sent over to town council, um, they were sent over to the fourth town council, the county town council, so I think they've all been there a week, moving it back to the end.
Okay. So the first one, article one is unpaid fire eater bills, I think that's the standard, right? Article two, any budget reconciliations, uh, they're all listed out here very succinctly. Any questions on budget reconciliations? Well, we actually can just, we can, we'll vote with the next few examples.
Yeah.
Go with that, um, article three, grant matches. Article five, emergency and snow related costs, if we need that. See if they need to increase that.
And we'll, we'll know score your, this warrant, which could, whether those two articles go away.
Okay. Article six, uh, new preservation, article seven, uh, grant easement for national grants for chief justice pushing highway. So what's that for Nancy?
So this is for the groundwater treatment plant and the raw pump station, as you may recall, every time we build a building, we have to grant easement to the utilities to provide service.
Okay.
So I don't have the language yet, um, Kevin's working on it in the engineer, I just know that we're, have these two easements on the special town meeting.
Okay, because we need to add them prior to, in the year.
One's the raw water pump station, the other one is the warranty point.
Okay, so that's both article seven and one eighth. Article nine, changing the town clerk, I'm elected to appointed, we talked about that, right?
What's my, uh, thing, town clerk, things, correct, is that the law?
Uh, that's my note to town council that the town clerk, that prior town council provided was incorrect.
That's okay.
Sorry, I have my drafts with all my notes to be.
Everybody okay with special town meeting warrant? All right, then special town meeting. Do you wanna vote?
Yeah, that's the, that's the one.
Uh, do you need a motion for that?
You didn't strike anything off, so.
Okay. So we're good, good, Esferton, do you want a motion, Lauren? I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, move to approve the proposed, uh, special town meeting warrant for April eighth to twenty twenty-four, Esferton. Second by Susan Harrison, Paul Sandler.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the annual town meeting warrant for April eighth. Again, article one, compensation for wet to the pit holes. Article two, the reports to boards and committees. Article three, community, the capital improvement coming, we just go to article four, the operating budget. Article five, waterways enterprise fund. Article six, Gulf Core Enterprise Fund, seven, the Waterflies Enterprise Fund, E, transfer station. And nine, Water Enterprise Fund, standard stabilization, uh, excess levy. Article ten, article eleven, revolving fund limits, many of those that we just entered, right?
And you were talking about the article one.
Okay. Article twelve, CPC. Article thirteen, CPC reconciliations.
It's a lot, seven hundred and nine thousand. It's that big window, though.
No, oh, windows five hundred?
Yeah.
Five hundred forty-eight.
Oh, here we go.
Uh, okay. But, you know, no, it's great that they got the grant.
Cross B, pick area, kingdom list, so it's good. The law can, yeah.
It is. Any questions? Article fourteen, affordable housing, small grant, we just talked about that. Article fifteen, uh, general laws, chapter ninety-one liability standard. Sixteen is the zoning bylaw, um, for M B T A, so we're, we're on track for that, right, Karen?
Yeah, that's the, um, the public information hearing coming up on Thursday evening.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Agreed. A lot happening this Thursday.
Yes.
Yes, starting our employee party.
What I don't know is, I have no visibility at this point into the wireless communication, um, so I'll have to talk with them on Thursday to see what's up with that.
Where are we at?
Article seventeen, yeah, I don't know where we are with this stuff.
Didn't Jim, didn't anyone, Angie meet with them about that?
Uh, I mean, I think they just tried to clarify what we already have.
Okay.
I don't think they're gonna make it more.
Like they change just.
More difficult, um, we rejected the article that residents had brought forward because in our opinion would have been a prohibition.
Yeah.
Um, so I think what the plaintiff was looking to do is just, based on what happened when they tried to permit the last one to make this a little clearer, a little clearer, but not make substantial changes.
I think it's posted, if I remember correctly.
I think it's posted, the language.
It is.
It is for the public hearing. It's posted on our website.
It's one of those, like, for the wireless piece.
Yeah, it's all posted. Any other questions about that?
Now, if we haven't had the, we need to talk to this, we have the wireless, right?
Yeah, we haven't, we probably should.
They're on your, they're on your next agenda for their projects?
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think we need to decide whether we're supportive or not, or not. We'll have to, before we vote on it, a hundred percent.
Yeah, well. Well, that's what they're saying, because Nancy's saying they're coming on the next meeting.
Yeah.
So I'll add, um, an overview of the articles. So then, this, this wild law they should do. Yeah. I'll let them know. Thank you. Yeah. Um, eighteen, revolving funds, uh, article nineteen, sidewalks, public wave, we just talked about. Article twenty, overnight recreational, just talked about. Article twenty-one, a local option, uh, for five thousand dollar personal property taxes, we talked about David Joe.
Now, one thing you're gonna mention, there are two personal property tax bills that amount to sixty-eight percent of the entire, like, two, two.
Wow.
Every, every source and mass electric are five hundred and eight thousand dollars.
I saw that expensive furniture and some multi-million dollar house.
Are there any changes that the board sees with the proposed warrant?
I have one question about the reconciliation.
Okay, which one?
Um.
CPC or powers?
Yes, CPC, uh, article thirteen. There is a proposed, uh, return of funds on the land acquisition of Water Street. Um, it was my understanding from conservation that, um, they're gonna wanna be doing some improvements that are above the donations that are coming, is it, or do?
I would think that would be outside scope depending on what that was.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd think for the purchase.
Purchase, okay, that's fine.
Which one is that?
Five thousand, fourteen and nine cents.
It's sort of in the middle of the land acquisition.
I couldn't find more sure, I see, yeah. I'll put a number.
Yep, right, I, I'd forgotten that.
All right, um, I make a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant for April eighth, twenty twenty-four as submitted. Second, second by Karen Campfield, for favor, aye. Thank you, Nancy, Lauren.
You.
Nancy. On work. Okay, um.
ARPA funds, Nancy, it's ARPA funds, so, um, back in, in Atlanta, it was February of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, when we knew what the ARPA funds were gonna be, the select board voted, um, the, the ARPA was gonna receive from the Commonwealth of Mass, all but two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we could be allocated to the water treatment plant. The board has never come forward with any other use for that, two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I'm now asking the board to allocate that to the water treatment plant. Funds have to be allocated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and as Kevin gave you his summary about how they're going to spend the funds, we will be spending those funds sooner rather than later, because we don't wanna incur interest on, on the project. So I'm just asking if the board would, uh, reconsider their vote and now allocate two hundred fifty thousand of the Commonwealth's allocation of ARPA funds to that project. A hundred percent of the public county, I mean, we're just got.
And public county was three point four million?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been almost remaining four hundred thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. It just came up yesterday.
Of course you would.
Can I ask why it was two hundred fifty thousand held out?
Ask that again.
Why it was, um, two hundred fifty thousand held out and not allocated?
We just left it out, I mean, at that point, some of the things we could spend it on were real clear.
Yeah.
So we left some money out in case there was some other stuff we wanted to do.
I think I knocked it all, I'm actually, I'm excited. Went sideways.
Yeah. I think now we're gonna. So that be in addition to the one million, seven thirty that's listed there, so would that go up to one million, nine, whatever, eighty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, especially with the new school on the horizon, can you really computer to help offset this problem or be helpful?
Right. Okay, do I have a motion or any additional questions? No, motion?
Move that the select board allocated remaining two hundred fifty thousand dollars that have been allocated American Rescue Act funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the new water treatment plant project, but probably.
Second. Move by Andrew Goodrich, second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye. We're now officially only seven minutes behind schedule.
Oh, we'll catch up. Okay, Nancy.
So the final agenda item, Madam Chair, may I?
Uh, yeah.
So we have a discussed vote acceptance of a donation to the police K N, uh, fund of one thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars from the E K Y White Foundation for Life and Science.
What is that, is it a local file?
Uh, they approached the, um, police department with this donation at the end of the calendar year, so funds were deposited into the calendar year, um, twenty twenty-three, and this was the first meeting where it could be accepted formally.
Excellent, do we have to?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, tango retired, yep, tango retired and right, please.
Okay. Um, all right, so do I have a motion?
Move to accept the, um, donation of one thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars from E K Y White Foundation, Chief of Life and Science, for the police K nine gift fund.
Move by Karen, that, always, second by Karen Campfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Look, I'm Nancy.
Frank, we.
All right, next, thank you, Nancy. Next on our agenda is our annual, uh, vote to acknowledge that our population pay proceeds, uh, during the summer as required by, uh, the A D C C. Do I have a motion? Move to approve the twenty, oh, twenty, one sec, Karen.
I just have to wait at the.
Don't ask that question.
Okay. I'm not having help, but I have them down, I try to rush right through there.
This is the name of, that's been twenty-five years.
It's the same number. It's the same number.
I've worked at the assessors office, there is no way.
Okay. It's just why it says an estimate.
That's why it says estimate.
I noticed your story.
But that's a good question. I've been asked that question for ten years.
Yeah, it's like just to acknowledge that there's a surge.
I, I told you what we went through in research, you wouldn't believe it.
And it, it, it just helps us with the number of liberal licenses, right?
Right, yeah, so.
You don't get any additional number of licenses for seasonal populations, just the state requirement to give them a lot.
Okay.
Doesn't impact anything.
Nothing.
I'm not hiring for.
Send up that.
For water.
Twenty-eight million.
But it's a really good question.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-four seasonal population estimate for the ABCC as of July tenth, twenty twenty-four. Our recent population estimate is twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Sir.
Moved by Karen Conley, seconded by Andrew Bridrich. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye. This is on principle, I must say. In solidarity with our.
Alright, so we had, now we come to the second for, um, our conservation commission, uh, board of committee appointments. We have two fabulous applicants. I gotta say, last couple of years, we have great applicants, and I will say this to those of you who are a little bit newer. Your most important job here is to put great people on the streets because they keep our town moving forward. It's just, and we've been really fortunate to test with these four.
Building line in our mouth.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so I mean, I'll open up for discussion. I thought both were incredibly qualified, I think we all did. I think Eric fills a spot that is being vacated, and it sounds like there's a opportunity for you in the town, so like, you would win.
Yep, yeah, I, I did see the input from conservation, um, because, because they were also qualified. And feedback I got was this, was exactly that, that with the departure of their Apple the next turn, that they felt like either would be great, I meant that Eric could really fill a gap that they had, and I also, you know, for years, they've been talking about, you know, addressing one of the product tech stuff, and then things, we almost so, so focused on. And I do think that we should immediately pass this. If she's interested, go for that, that was pretty deeper. That's outside of.
Yep. Do you know? Okay. Commentary on this, though? Thoughts?
Uh, Julie's fantastic, unbelievable, but I think, right, I think. I'm gonna show that out, feel if it's. Definitely, he's very involved as a resume.
You know, we need her involved with everything going on. Community.
Okay.
Immediately get a question for her as well.
Do I have a motion?
Move to appoint Eric Di Tomaso to the conservation condition for a term of three, uh, three years or until such time as his successor's name contended the completion of the ethics requirements.
Sir.
Moved by Karen Conley, seconded by Andrew Bridrich. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Eric and Julie. I have no doubt that everyone will be in touch with me shortly.
I will, well, you will, we'll, we'll see.
Yeah. You don't wanna let any of that create talent. SS five. Okay, so we have the second vote for renewal of drain layer licenses. Does anybody have any questions? They go paperwork obviously is intact. Do I approve, do I have a motion to approve the renewal of the drain layers licenses for Iera Brothers Incorporated, Ricio Excavation Company, Cobra Enterprises Incorporated, Tottenham Enterprises Incorporated, and EL Margets and Sons Incorporated. Somebody. Seconded by Karen Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get that, Marie?
Yeah, this is.
I know, we've been looking at it. He's been looking at it all night.
I'm just pushing.
I know. What you mean is a wet paper towel. It's gone for a while.
Thank you for your rest of the.
Thank you, Nancy, I owe you.
He's, he's.
Sorry, sorry.
A little bit of a bug. A little bit of a bug issue.
She's okay.
Bug myself, seconded by Karen Conley.
I'm sorry.
Past two days.
The bug distracted.
And that was the drain layers license.
Yeah, I hope that. This is a heated genius.
We'll come back to correspondence since our clerk, uh, had to step away for a moment. No worries. Um, we'll go to liaison reports. I'll start this side. Any white card?
Got a couple things. EDC, um, month last night approved, um, funding, four thousand dollars of funding for the Sister City Film Festival, which is up, got this.
Well, that's nice.
And it's been picked up on calendars for September then, getting some traction. Very exciting. Uh, there are the four movies, and if they raise, they are charging a donation at the door, and anything that they raise above, um, cost will go back to EDC.
Oh.
Yeah, that was a good one. Uh, I will review. They, that will be phenomenal beginning tomorrow night. And the last thing I want to mention is I will be serving in our next meeting, um, for musical treatment Ohio. Um, and I also will, will pitch in, we're having to switch January twenty-ninth video date, and maybe that would be like Susan tried.
I can't either.
Well, we can have you switch if you want.
Yes, for me.
Do I switch? Yeah, okay.
I hear that's it. I don't mind just doing it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I got nothing to switch, though.
But remember, it's Tuesday.
Yeah, it's, I'm okay, yes.
Also, you've got the twenty-ninth.
Yes. Um, is that it?
Yep.
Karen? Okay, great. Thanks for working through that. Do you have anything?
No, I can't get my phone. No, good. It was Christmas vacation and all.
Yeah.
I know, I feel, I feel like I'm still in that whole mode.
Yeah, we have a lot of our community that I raise for not a year.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Well, Waterways met last week, um, the dog box, a lot of continues, uh, and they're still working through it, and we should have some text soon. Um, and then they did a dredging, um, update. And then we have our first more hiring in property meeting next Wednesday. Hope out here and it's not going here.
Excellent.
Thank you. That's all scheduled, and everyone will be doing it. Karen and I, we'll be inside. She'll be moving in.
Thank you.
And that is what I have.
Alright, um, would you like to share correspondence?
I would love to. So we received a letter from the town of Duxbury, the, um, town manager of the select board regarding the hillbush nuclear power station. Um, and they're, um, asking DEP to request, um, license operation. Um, and install, like, it seems like additional emissions on devices for, for the project. I'm not sure. They didn't really ask for us to.
I think they asked us to submit a similar letter.
Was there a middle letter, right?
Yeah, Mara asked us to do a similar, and I'm looking on that.
Yeah, so did you put in that?
I'm hoping.
Okay, so they want, would like us to sign enough, we need to discuss that, or?
Well, I think they wanted to use vibration technology versus shipping of stuff, uh, or, or putting it into the bay. So, um, this is yet another whole tech way to make their, the fact that they bought this plant, they got paid a lot of money and to decommission it, now they're trying to find the easiest way others might take on the whole thing, so. I think most of our citizens would approve of us taking the position that they should probably what they need to pay to decommission it and make less profit, frankly.
Did you read that, did you read the, the letter, the proposed letter?
I did.
Okay, I mean, Karen, thoughts or comments on it?
Well, it's way too long.
Yeah, it's hard.
It's way, 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 way too long.
Say that. Oh, do they want us to mirror the letter that they?
I'll work on it.
Oh, we can take a look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
Pair it down, pair it back.
Okay, well, we're all in agreement that we do wanna write a similar letter.
Yeah, I think we would support the position.
Yeah, put the similar in, yeah, okay. Um, and then a, um, notice on the Edward Foster. Um, let's see, what is the address? The dock, yes.
One ninety-six.
One ninety-six Edward Foster, we, on January fifth, a public notice, um, do I need to read it of the waterways application? So it's to construct fear, and that, the department will consider written comments, so that's, um, Department of Environment, Protection, Waterways Regulation Program, they will consider written comments on the application received within thirty days of the notification date, so the notification date was, um, January ninth.
Do you know what the current length is? I know that they were going back and forth. I know that said in the letter, I don't think so. It looked like there was a drawing.
Hundred and thirty-four foot long dock is what it said.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Hundred and four, thirty-four foot.
Yeah, it starts online, I just wanted to.
Well, there's a twenty-foot proposed ramp. It looks like there's a twenty-foot proposed ramp and then a hundred and thirty-four foot long dock.
Oh.
And then at the end, a, um, proposed six-by-twelve foot.
Goes out there.
Oh, wait.
No, it says that it's.
And they're compending, like, what is that, that ruling, that basically they're approving it?
No, I mean, this is, this is their hearing. The state is actually only gonna check that you want a waterways license.
Right.
So.
So it says the proposed project has been determined to be water-dependent. So I wasn't really clear on what that meant. I did ask somebody.
It's the link of the whole J that goes on there.
Yeah, I know how big it is.
I don't know, yeah.
So I think the most important thing is, is this posted outside at all, or you should post this?
There's links to it on the poster.
Okay, so if you have any comments, you wanna address them to Cali Harper, the Environmental Analyst, DEP Waterways Regulation Program, twenty Riverside Drive, Lakeville, Mass, oh, two, three, K seven.
There is also a link, it looks like, where you can electronically, you can view it and then electronically submit, right?
Where is this posted? Is, is it on our website?
It's not right now, we've put it on the website.
Yeah, we probably should. I mean, it's no sense having a link in the document like this.
I think if the water kind of just means, can't do the private unless it's on the water. I think that's all that matters.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would wanna talk about water, never.
And then we have a grant report for Citrus, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
And did you?
Is that something that we, um, posed?
It's posted.
Oh, it's posted, great. So great job, great job, it's a lot of grants. The total, um, from January one, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three is three million. Um, so we want to make that thing bigger here.
Right.
Thirty-one thousand, thirty-five hundred and thirty-six thousand and seventy-five cents.
It's on the town news for their webpage on the room section. And is that three hundred and ten thousand dollars, we have to check in ninety, is that what you were talking about earlier, as I thought? Adding to. You know, funds, yes, okay. Thank you for all that.
Thank you. And then, um, there's, um, an annual MLK memorial event at the high school at the Citrus Performing Arts Center at one PM on Memorial Day featuring scholars and musical ensemble and chorus and vocalist and a staff team, so that should be fun. Again, it's, um, January fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day at the Citrus Performing Arts Center at one PM, and that, I believe, was posted at town hall.
And it's on the website and, yeah, it's on the Facebook page, right?
Yeah, and it's on the school sites, too. And is there another?
No, I think it's just more of the, the same.
That's the same, there's more of the, yeah.
That actually. And then is this, yeah, yeah, and that's it, right? Yep, that's it. And I have, that's the same. There's nothing additional one on the cap, I believe. Don't be asking. Alright, yeah, any others? A motion for acceptance of the meeting limits.
Make yourself available, but we're getting all the seven hundred and fifty.
Moved by Andrew Bridrich, seconded by Karen Campfield, all in favor? Do I have a motion to adjourn sign happens?
I don't know.
I moved again, you seconded, all in favor? Good night, everyone, thank you very much.